Thank you, Mr. Glasser. Welcome, everyone, this evening. It is Tuesday, November 11th. The appointed hour is 6:00 PM. And my council is full and present and accounted for. First thing on our agenda tonight is a prayer with Chaplain Dennis McGow. If you can.
Well, thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to do your poor business for your people in this world, God. We pray for your wisdom as we live through these issues. We pray for your words as we discuss them with one another. Lord, we thank for the men and women of our country who we honor today, Lord. We just ask that you bless them, watch over them, guard them, protect them. Help us to be good guardians here on the home front as they're away, God, doing their job. Lord, we thank you again for the way that you have blessed our country and the way that you allow us to freedom, to express ourselves in beings such as this. Best of your blessings upon all we do here this evening. We then would pray. I'll be there.
Please say "Thank you," Mr. Glasser.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we say the pledge, the mayor called me yesterday and asked me if I would say a few words as a retired Marine. I was honored and I appreciate that, Madam Mayor, that you would allow me. Just to talk about the veterans, are there any veterans in the room? I was reading a book unbroken and then looked at the trials that that gentleman went through between the raft and being tortured and beaten and injected by the Japanese during World War II. And tragically, he's just passed at the end of the making of the movie. You know, when you look at us as a society, and I was listening to the radio this morning, and people were calling in, "I would rather move to Russia." Well, you know, and I'm sorry, I called in, and I should have been a lot more politically correct, but my advice was then tack up and move. Okay? I mean, those men and women that put that uniform on and the people that raise their hand in air, we do need to honor them. You know, back at the end of World War II, I'm sorry, World War I in history, if you don't know this, on November 11th, 1919, and I don't know if I can pronounce this, Armistice Day was...
Armistice.
Thank you, Armistice. All right, Chris told me I'm misspelling. And that was at the end, maybe at the end of World War I. And you fast forward that to Congress passing in 1926, a resolution to honor veterans on Veterans' Day, and it became law and has now been annually celebrated as a national holiday as of 1938. And even though you look back into there are any Marines in the audience, our birthday was yesterday, 249 years. There's so much history in the fabric of what we stand for as a nation. And it all comes down to honoring God and our focus on those people that give more than themselves. Because those people that raise their hand, they're the ones that gave more of themselves than they expected back. And we honor you all tonight, and I appreciate you coming and thank you for serving. When the chaplain prayed and says, "If two persons are among us, then the Lord is with us, and he's with us tonight," so let's shout that out when it's under God. We are one nation under God. You'll join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, residents, community members, and fellow council members. For the past year, I've had the privilege of serving as the mayor of the town of Mount Pleasant. I am honored and humbled by the opportunity to serve this wonderful community. Tonight, I'm going to recap everything that has happened over the past year and lay out my plans for the community moving forward. The start of my term has been filled with great achievements and significant challenges. Over the past year, this council has been faced with many important decisions, decisions that impact the quality of life for our residents. Some of these decisions were difficult to make, but necessary for the continued success of our town. As a council, we decided to confront several big challenges, and we deployed measures to prevent our present-day challenges from turning into our children's future problems. In addition to these efforts, we continue to pursue excellence and to provide top-quality services to our residents. Together, and in such a short time, we have achieved many accomplishments. You may recall, under Mayor Swell's leadership, the town received an increase in our bond rating from Moody's Investor Service. It gives me great pleasure to announce that this past year, we received a bond rating increase from Standard &amp; Poor's Rating Services, and the town now maintains an AA1 rating from Moody's and a AAA rating from S&amp;P. We are only the third municipality in the state to obtain these ratings. This rating reflects proactive stance that the town has taken in addressing unfunded liabilities that plague many American communities. The upgrade also results in a financial savings for the taxpayers. Other notable accomplishments include receiving the GFOA Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 26th straight year, as well as the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the second year in a row. This award is the highest financial recognition given to local governments. And I'm pleased to announce that the town continues to meet and exceed the 25% retention requirement for our general fund reserves. As many of you know, helping reserve funds benefits the town in several ways. It contributes to an increase in our bond ratings and allows the town to be self-reliant in emergency situations. Another accomplishment I'd like to acknowledge is our proactive approach towards addressing critical infrastructure needs. Later, I will explain the many ways in which we are accomplishing this. But for now, it's sufficient to say we've begun to address a major threat to our community, and we're proud of the success that we've achieved thus far. Ladies and gentlemen, the state of our town is strong and indicative not only of sustained strength, but of continued progress towards excellence in public service and quality of life. These accomplishments are noteworthy, but none would have been possible without the efforts of my fellow council members, our fine town staff, and our volunteers. We at the town of Mount Pleasant take pride in the work we do every day, knowing that in one way or another, we are making a positive impact in the lives of our residents. We believe in the value of public service. We believe that it matters, and that's why we're here. Our mission in the town is to provide superior performance in a manner that is distinctive and impactful to each person served and that establishes a standard of quality that endures for generations. Guided by this mission, we continue to strive for excellence and high quality in the services we provide. I believe we do provide superior performance. Last year, we issued 858 building permits, emptied over 30,000 trash cans a week, and held over 180 public meetings. These numbers have increased over the totals from the prior year, and also increasing in our end numbers is recreation participants. In total, we had nearly 91,000 of youth and adult recreation participants, as well as 2,400 senior center members this time of season. We saw a decrease in the number of fires in town, but we saw an increase in the number of medical emergencies. Our crime rate, particularly our violent crime rate, remains incredibly low for a municipality of our size. The leading crime in Mount Pleasant is unlocked vehicle break-ins. Please lock your cars. When compared to other larger municipalities, we proudly maintain the lowest crime rate in South Carolina. These figures represent the town's commitment to public service. We have achieved many notable accomplishments, and we're very proud of that, but we're not finished. There are additional matters that require our attention, and we must continue to pursue these matters because they will have a significant impact on the quality of life in Mount Pleasant. It is my responsibility as your mayor to defend this community against perceived threats, both internal and external. That is why I'm designating the widening of Highway 41 as the town's top legislative priority for the next legislative session of the South Carolina General Assembly. Several major developments have been approved by neighboring jurisdictions for the areas just beyond the Highway 41 bridge. These developments will be tremendously impactful to our residents, particularly those who live on the Highway 41 corridor. Both the South Carolina Department of Transportation and the Charleston Area Transportation Studies have identified the widening of side of South Carolina Highway 41 as a critical project. However, there's no funding available to complete this needed expansion. It is for this reason that I will be calling upon members of the state legislative delegation to act quickly and resolutely for the protection of our residents and their quality of life. My second legislative priority will be the protection of revenue sources we need to fund critical projects. Each year, more and more unfunded mandates are passed on by the federal and state government. We at the municipal level are left to pay for these mandates when we face stiff legal repercussions. Every year, the state of South Carolina collects revenue from each local government. By law, the state is to return calculated amount to the cities and towns. But for many years now, the state has chosen not to return the full and legal amount to municipalities. This equates to millions of dollars over the past few years, and it's rightfully ours, and yet we don't receive it back. I will continue to apply pressure and demand that Mount Pleasant be giving its fair share. And I will also continue to require strict adherence for our reserve policies here at the town. I will not jeopardize the long-term financial security of our community for present-day benefit. Regarding other legislative priorities, I'm charging this council with identifying additional matters, and I'm requesting that we fully discuss those matters during our council re-reading January. And I urge members of the public to help us in identifying these priorities. Please contact us, share your thoughts with us. We are listening, and we are here to work for you. It will take our collective effort to rally the state in support of our community's priorities. But we have to do it, and we will be successful. When it comes to addressing critical needs in our community, we know we must rely on ourselves to respond. We at the town of Mount Pleasant continue to search for ways in which we can be self-reliant, thus quickly and effectively meeting the needs of our community. Using this mindset, we have addressed many issues with proactive responses. We have prevented other potential issues from developing. One demonstration of self-reliance that I am especially proud of is one that was hard fought, desperately needed, and critical for our community. For the first time in Mount Pleasant's history, we established a regular and dependable funding source for infrastructure maintenance and repair. For years, we focused on building our town and our infrastructure. The downsides is that no money was ever put away to fund the upkeep. And today, we have to pay for not only new infrastructure, but also repair and maintenance of existing infrastructure. President Reagan once said, "You and I, as individuals, can, by borrowing, live beyond our means, but only for a limited period of time." We must act today in order to preserve tomorrow. And let there be no misunderstanding. We are going to begin to act beginning today. So too must we begin to act today in order to preserve our community, both now and for the future. And this council did just that. We took a bold stance in approving a three-millage increase for infrastructure, the first millage increase in nearly 20 years. We also increased fees, which had not been changed in many years. And as a result, we weren't even recouping our costs for providing the service. To some, this was an unpopular decision. But for those who took the time to understand the need for the increases, this was a warranted decision and one that will protect our community for the long term. With revenue generated from this increase, we have ability to complete more projects and complete them faster than the full. In addition to funding infrastructure repair and maintenance projects, we are continuing to carry out our new capital projects through our capital improvement plan to include critical road connections, stormwater improvements, and public facilities. Some new infrastructure projects include the construction of Sweetgrass Basket Parkway Phase 4A, the I-526 turn lane on ramp from Long Point Road, the Bessemer Park West Boulevard Roundabout, and the Coleman Boulevard roadway and drainage improvements, which include the Coleman Boulevard Roundabout. It's important that you all know of these projects, especially the Coleman Boulevard Roundabout. And we will closely monitor the data, and we will review it on a regular basis. If the traffic solutions are not working, as we believe they will, then we will reevaluate and together set a new course. We talk at length about infrastructure in terms of roads and stormwater ditches, but there's another component of infrastructure. We are also addressing public facilities. Pursuant to our strategic plan, we added public buildings to our infrastructure fund and dedicated regular funding toward maintenance and repair. With help from the revenue generated by our tax increment financing fund, we have begun working on several new public facilities, including the construction of Fire Station 6 in Carolina Park, the design of Memorial Waterfront Park Phase 2, the Shem Creek Boardwalk, a new town hall, a new town double gymnasium located on the current town hall site, and the design of the rifle range road of Recreation Land. With, if designed properly, can be state-of-the-art and amenity that incorporates passive and active recreation uses, unlike any amenity we currently have. And it will be accessible to all for the central location. In addition, the town is continuing to work with CARDA and other local agencies to build more bus shelters and improve public transportation options. We prefer to leverage partnerships whenever possible. And our partnership with CARDA is just one of our many successful partnerships. Though it's not always possible or prudent to partner with another entity financially, we often support each other in completion of projects and goals which serve the benefit of our community as a whole. Referring back to the theme of self-reliance and my earlier comments about proactive approaches, I'd like to take a few minutes now to talk about what is happening in our public schools. First, let me recognize and congratulate two recently elected members of the Charleston County School Board. This is Kate Darby and Mr. Chris Staub. We're very excited to have Kate and Chris representing District 2 on the school board, and we know they're going to do a great job. I also want to thank the Charleston County residents, especially Mount Pleasant residents, who voted to extend the 1B sales tax for schools. The revenue generated from the sales tax will fund much-needed capital projects identified in the school district's Phase 4 capital programs master plan. We needed this referendum to pass, and it did, because our citizens recognized the importance of it, and they responded with overwhelming support. The continued success of our schools and the quality of our public education is threatened by inadequate and aging facilities we have in East Cleveland. As many of you know, several of our schools are currently needing or exceeding their building capacity limits. Our only high school has an enrollment with small university. And our middle and primary schools are resorting to the use of trailers to house our students. This is unacceptable for our children. This past spring, I appointed a Blue Ribbon Committee of Council, led by Councilman Garch, to study the programmatic and capital needs in Mount Pleasant schools. Town Council approved the recommendations produced by this committee, and we forwarded these recommendations to the school board. We were ahead of the sales tax referendum, and we helped the school board to get it through the state legislature. We let the board know we have critical needs in Mount Pleasant and that the needs had to be addressed in order to support the referendum. The school board worked with us, and they designated District 2 projects as the top three projects to be completed in the next building cycle. The projects include Caroline Park Elementary School, a new East Cleveland High School, and a new shared high school stadium. We are pleased that these three projects are going to be completed soon, but we know there are other critical needs facing our schools, and these needs must be met. In fact, because I believe that the needs are so great and so important, I'm establishing a new Scanning Committee of Council on Education. This new committee will be tasked with identifying and studying the issues facing our schools, and they will make recommendations to council regarding the same. I believe through the work of this new committee, we will be able to more quickly and efficiently respond to the needs of our schools and our students. We have accomplished great things here at the town, and we will continue to accomplish great things. But we can't deny that we've spent a considerable amount of time over this past year talking about growth and development here at town. The discussions and decisions regarding growth and development have dominated our agendas and our public meetings. As much as some would like, we can't stop growth. To quote President Reagan once again, he said, "We believe then and now that there are no limits to growth and human progress when men and women are free to follow their dreams." We can manage growth, and we can do a better job of managing it. But we can't stop it, nor should we. For the moment that we, as a government, step in and stop growth, we have violated one of the very tenets of liberty to which we, as elected representatives and defenders of liberty, are sworn to protect. Though we cannot stop growth, we need to acknowledge that for many people, this topic carries with it an emotional component, which at times creates tension among community members. It's time to step back, take note of all the facts, feelings, and opinions, and resolve as a community to better understand the situation as a whole and to draw important lessons from this past year. We cannot and will not continue down this path. I intend to change our direction, and I believe the first step is to address the causes of community tension and to do so in meaningful way. When I ran for mayor of Mount Pleasant, I promised voters who elected I would increase and improve opportunities for public engagement in town government, while I believe we have made great strides in encouraging engagement. Full rooms. I'm not naive enough to believe that our steps thus far can be considered sufficient. It's for this reason that I'm speaking to you tonight, and I'm asking you to join me in taking the first step toward our community's new direction. And our new direction is simply to take back Mount Pleasant. Our citizens expect and demand us to protect, promote, and perfect Mount Pleasant, and that's what we'll do. We'll meet and exceed their expectations, and we'll protect, promote, and perfect what makes Mount Pleasant the greatest community in the world. We can't do this alone. Town Council will lead us in this new direction. But first, we must know and understand all the facts and the opinions that people represent. We need from our citizens, we need to hear from you on a regular basis. Call us, email us, meet with us. Tell us your concerns, opinions, and certainly your suggestions for improvement. We need to know from you those characteristics, priorities, and values that set us apart from other communities. What is Mount Pleasant? What does Mount Pleasant stand for? And what is Mount Pleasant valued for? Answer these questions for yourself, and then tell us your response. We're not just another town. We're not like any other city in the world. And though there's value in comparison, we need to focus our efforts moving forward on building and strengthening community relationships. Mount Pleasant is the best community in the world, and we do things differently here. We do a lot of things really well, but there's some things we can do better. The most important thing is connecting with our citizens to identify and define community priorities, preferences, and opinions. We can't do this alone. Civic participation does not end with voting someone into office and letting him or her run the show. Instead, it requires input, communication, and involvement on your part. We find ourselves at a critical juncture in Mount Pleasant. We are a community transitioning from a small town with a few residents to a much larger town with many more residents. The decision made by this council today directly impacts the future of Mount Pleasant. And without a fully engaged community, we run the risk of making these decisions without all the necessary information. I believe that the answer to successfully navigating this time of transition is found in understanding the proper role of government, which if fulfilled correctly, becomes the mechanism through which the community comes together and great success is achieved. To achieve this endeavor and to take our community down a new and better path, I propose the following course of action. I'm tasking staff to the following. Hold regular meetings with community groups and work towards developing common agendas with the same. We also intend to use the information collected at these meetings to craft the town's next strategic plan. Collect public opinion data frequently and through a variety of mediums. Share this information with town council and the community at large. Using data gathered from the community, develop a formal government outreach and engagement strategy. This strategy will outline the ways in which citizens can participate in their local government. Referring and referencing the results of the Intuitive Transparency Workshop, the strategy will also identify the ways in which we, as the local government, can convey the information more clearly and concisely to citizens. Continue to provide additional opportunities and public input through constant communication and across a variety of mediums, including but not limiting to the town's website, social media, email, mobile apps, multimedia, and of course, face-to-face contact. Continue to pursue excellence and efficiency in public service. In collaboration with the town's historical commission, develop a Town of Mount Pleasant Preservation Society. Task with the preservation and promotion of the town's historical assets. The Preservation Society will also be involved in advocacy, educational programs, planning, and preservation of both physical assets and oral history of buildings. We have a very capable and professional staff, and I have no doubt that they will accomplish these tasks fully and to the best of their abilities. But the direction of this town, as well as the outreach and engagement efforts of local government, can't terminate the staff. Town Council needs to lead the efforts. And further, we must remain ever-present in the community, listening, discussing, and serving. I'm asking for support from my fellow council members in this regard. Council members? I'm calling for a commitment from each of you to be present with a united front to the community and the benefit of the community. Recognizing that our primary role is to lead and set direction for staff and volunteer boards and commissions, I ask that we make a concerted effort to collaborate and lead in a collective manner. We are stronger together, and we will accomplish more collectively than any of us can individually. We want our citizens to be engaged, but when we are divided on our efforts as a council, we effectively discourage engagement and instead foster divisions in our community as a whole. Each council member is elected at large and serves the community at large. Doing the good work of our community is not always what it's popular. It's not about political points. It's about how we feel in our hearts and what we know in our minds to be true, the government of these lives, where people come together, a place where no one gets left behind, an instrument of good that helps the community. Let us remember the oath we took upon assuming this office and reaffirm our commitment pursuant of public good. We will uphold our commitment, and we will lead the community towards a new era of engagement. I expect that each of my fellow council members will not only advocate for this additional engagement, but they will make him or herself available to participate in the same. Council members, ask yourself these questions. Do we really have all the information we need to make critical decisions? Do we really spend enough time listening and communicating with our citizens? I believe that if you ask yourself these questions or remind us, the answer will be no. I'm calling on each of you to figure out how you can change your answers to an unequivocal yes. I will be working with each of you to identify additional ways that we can engage members of the community and gather the information we need to make informed decisions. of the community and gather the information we need to make informed decisions. I will also be implementing new efficiency measures for this council as a means to improve the public process and the quality of services that we provide to our citizens through the committee structure. I mentioned one efficiency earlier with the establishment of a standing committee of council and education. I believe that from time to time, it's beneficial to review our work processes and ask ourselves, is there a way we can improve? I ask that my fellow council members join me in reviewing the way we do things and to note any potential improvements that will enable us to better serve. Tonight, I have outlined for you all my plans to lead the community to a new and better direction. I believe that by using local government as an instrument, we can and will bring people together and establish connections like never before. Together, we will continue to strengthen, engage, and build our community neighborhood by neighborhood. With strong, positive relationships built upon mutual trust and collaboration, we will preserve, promote, and protect Mount Pleasant. I want to thank you all for blessing me with the opportunity to lead this town. As I suspected and have fully come to understand, there are many challenges and responsibilities in leading a town such as ours. To some, these challenges and responsibilities would seem daunting and unattractive, but to me, they're both wholly and enthusiastically assumed, no matter the magnitude. I do not fear the responsibilities nor the challenges. Instead, I welcome them. I invite my fellow council members to do the same. As the Athenian creed states, "We will ever strive for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will unceasingly seek to quicken the sense of public duty. We will revere and obey the city's law. We will transmit this city not only less, but greater, better, and more beautiful than it has transmitted to us." I stand before you today, ready and willing, to assume the responsibilities and challenge entrusted to me as mayor of the town of Mount Pleasant. I have certainly enjoyed serving as your mayor over this past year, and I look forward to continuing to serve this for years to come. Thank you very much. All right, now we have a council meeting to give attention to.
How do you follow that?
Here, here. Thank you all for coming. Good night, ladies. Third thing on the agenda tonight, Mr. Pacarini, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act? And then I need approval of the agenda.
I'm here for the second one.
Have a motion at second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed and the ayes carried. I believe we have two public hearings, and I'll turn that over to our competent staff with Christian.
Good evening. We do have two public hearings. The first public hearing that we have is a request to amend the comprehensive plan future land use map. This would be a 3.8 acre tract of land. The specific request is to change the land use designation from community conservation to medium density residential. These are five tracts of land, all located on Golf Drive and Annie Laura Lane.
Thank you. I believe we have some people signed up to speak.
Robert Timberman. My name is Robert Timberman, 2142 Golf Drive, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I've lived there since 1908. Lands and tracts behind us are known to me as woods, because I grew up throughout the years. I recently purchased, which was known as a herd tract, which is owned on Annie Laura Lane, about two to three years ago. It was reasonably large, too. I purchased three of the lots that were left that were for sale, and came out of retirement, decided to go within the community. As it was building, I was approached by Louis Dale Altman and also Mr. Boris and Louis Boris and Ms. McAdveen, whether I would be interested in their land. At first, I was rather apprehensive to do it, because it's such an undertaking. I don't know if anyone's been down Annie Laura Lane, but on Annie Laura Lane, it is not really a road there. It's rock, pretty much a few nights from home, but the majority of it was pretty blighted, and especially down toward the end. I decided to go forward with it and spoke to them, and we've now presented it. You know, council, we've been through many of the different meetings, and what we're attempting to do is rebuild and do the infrastructure within that. As you can see, it's an undying task for the amount of lots that are there. So for me to be able to accomplish this, with the amount of land there is, it's only three acres to begin with, and the cost of the infrastructure is why we're asking for the request. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, take that.
Thank you very much.
George Freeman.
Thank you, George. You know the routine.
Very well.
They're very good.
George Freeman, 4850 Bone Road. I'm glad this came up tonight, because after listening to you, Madam Mayor, I really don't have anything else to say, because you've said anything I need to say. When we did the comprehensive plan, that involved the citizens of Mount Pleasant, and the citizens of Mount Pleasant said, stated how they wanted this area to be. In addition to that, the citizens of Mount Pleasant, in conjunction with the town of Mount Pleasant and the county, created an overlay area in this area also, which involved a lot of the citizens in the area. So the citizens in the area have already spoken as to how they want this area to be. And to change the comprehensive plan, we'd be to go against what the citizens want. Now, I know the gentleman wants to do something with this property, and I sympathize with him. But if we continue to chip away at the comprehensive plan, we will no longer be saying what the citizens want, but what individuals want. And that's not how, from what I heard in your state of the town address, how we want this town to run. We want it to run by the citizens of Mount Pleasant. And the citizens...
Aaron Rowley.
My comments have been addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to address this issue? This public hearing is closed. Oh, sorry. Please state your name and address. You have two minutes for the record.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, Council Kittenberry with Resource Engineering. Just to follow up a little bit, and we've been working with Mr. Timberman on some conceptual planning for this property. Again, this is an infill property. It's existing road, infrastructure there. I think it could be a lot of improvements to the area and improvements to the residents around that area. It backs up to medicinal property on the backside, and I just think that some infill and some growth in that area and some nice homes Mr. Timberman's building there now, if you've been down that area, it's really an asset to the overall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now this public hearing is closed. Yes, ma'am.
We do have a second public hearing this evening. This public hearing is also to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map. In this particular case, it is for an 8.83 acre tract of land. The request specifically is to change the land use from commercial to medium density. The tracts of land, there are two tracts of land that are in question, are located at McConnell Lane and Brickyard Parkway.
Thank you. I believe we have several people signed up to speak on this issue.
My name is Mark Paliser. I live at 277 East Stanley Place. I thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to speak. Mayor Page several times mentioned quality of life in her address, and that has something to do with this matter here. We went through this at the planning commission hearing last month, and the matter comes down to several factors. Northbound traffic out of the area, if they put in a area of townhouses, which will bring in approximately 15 more families, is going to be considerably worse than it is now at that intersection, because there's no other way out than to go through the Brickyard property. At the planning meeting last month, Mr. Morrison spoke to the effect that the traffic from the homes would be less than the commercial. However, he also said that no study was, the study was done or necessary. If this was to proceed, obviously, I think a true study of traffic conditions would be in order. The townhouse residents will put additional strain on the use of the pool, the tennis, the basketball, and walking paths, which are in easy walking distance of these townhouses. However, they will not be a member of the Brickyard Homeowners Association as it stands now, and we are paying the fees for them to be using our facilities, which are openly accessible and are already used excessively by those who are not a part of our homeowners association. As was mentioned, there was a comprehensive plan set up in this town, and the area was set up as commercial. We don't know what will come in there. We may get stores, there's talk of a gas station going into that area. We have to take a chance, but adding a residential area to the back of what is already commercial cannot do anything but add more traffic and population to the area that is not able to What I would ask is that we don't change the zoning, that we keep it commercial as it was originally planned, and that the, what do you call it, the comprehensive plans stay as is.
Thank you.
Sarah White.
Mrs. Paliser covered everything else about site.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Adele Fisher.
Ms. Fisher, if you would state your name and address for the record. We have two minutes to address the record.
Adele Fisher, 1216 Windwood Court. I agree with almost everything that has been previously stated, but I will add, I do agree that we cannot stop development and adding new residents to the, to Mount Pleasant. However, this is already zoned commercial, which will not increase. That tract of land will not bring new residents into Mount Pleasant. Having commercial will benefit our residents, where we can walk to shops, where we could utilize when we're at the pool, maybe an ice cream shop, maybe a coffee, a Starbucks, whatever. That would be far better than adding more residents and concern about the traffic hazards on Highway 17. So I hope this commission honors your zoning board, who voted unanimously to not change the zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joanna Hoover.
My name is Joanna Hoover, and I live at 1215 Windwood Court. I'm the president of the homeowners association of Brickyard. I've been part of Brickyard under board for 14 years, so pretty much here at all. And I'm just here to state what a lot of the residents were concerned about, and it was the traffic on our driveway. Also, in regards to the taxes for the town, I would think that keeping it commercial would be better, beneficial for the town and our residents. So just expressing what the residents are saying. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
David C.
My name is David C. I live at 2013 Shields Lane. I'm also a member of the Design Review Board, and I've all lived in the town on a couple levels. Mayor Page, is it fair for me to ask council if they've all had the opportunity to read the letter in its entirety that I sent in yesterday regarding the comprehensive plan issues?
It's been distributed. It's certainly fair to ask.
Thank you. It's a very important, it's a very important thing to discuss, because, you know, I have to tell you, I truly believe in the comprehensive plan. I think you made a great, great comment about the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive planning doesn't just take into account today. It takes into account 2009, 2019, 2014 land up review. Comprehensive plan charts the course, and I think we have a novelty. I don't think that this is really a commercial area. Okay, I believe in mixed use, when it's right for everybody. And I've got to show you a few things. You're never going to get commercial here. You can't build on that. There's only one acre of usable land, so you won't get commercial there. We're going to potentially assemble some things. This has been foreclosed upon in the past, and what you have is a problem with, I've been trying to market the property commercially for you for two years, and I can tell you this right now, you have commercial, it's going to go here. You already have existing commercial here. The dentists and that would love to see more residential use. You can't do a commercial here. You have a stagnant commercial center here that's had 15 business licenses. All I'm asking for this is, this isn't a novel, and this is not a straight commercial area. If you put townhomes in this area, you fulfill every obligation on the comprehensive plan. Every single box is checked, and you will see everyone thrive. You can walk to car, you can ride your bike. I understand the places that are being made, I think all of them are valid. I just think that this isn't a straight commercial area. I still think you can do it. The problem I'm seeing at Shawmore Village, which is commercial on bottom and residential on top, is now the businesses want to vacate because they don't have appropriate signage.
David, we knew you were going to...
You don't have any signage.
We knew you were going to run into a problem with your two minutes, but I certainly appreciate it, and we did get your letter, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jeff Burnmore, 74, Iron Bottom, Charleston, South Carolina. The highest and best use of these two parcels of raw land is low-density residential, not commercial. The two hot button issues for the council and everybody in the audience is traffic and economic development. The applicant is proposing 50 townhomes. That generates, yes, 50, I'm sorry, 100 parking places, 100 vehicles. If you talk commercial, we're talking nine acres of property. That could conceptually generate 65,000 to 70,000 square feet of commercial office or retail. 60,000 to 75,000 square feet of commercial would generate, based on the code, 250 vehicles. It's commercial. You want it to stay commercial. That's going to generate 250 vehicles versus the 100 vehicles that the low-density residential is proposing. Economic development argument, you can't have it both ways. Seven years ago, I was in this chamber, and Debbie Rice Marco was before you with a viable commercial use. The ring was so outraged that Debbie Rice Marco withdrew her application. The property went back on the market and remains raw land today. As raw land, it produces zero income for the town of Mount Pleasant. If the proposed 50 townhomes are constructed, it would generate substantial income for the town. Increased real estate taxes for sure, permit fees, business licenses, sales tax, utility user tax, impact fees. By not taking advantage of this viable low-density development, you're passing up an economic development opportunity. Our company owns one of those tracts. We're committed to making it work.
Thank you, Jeff.
I would ask for 30 seconds more from the council. Only one point I'd like to make. Seven years ago...
No, sir.
30 seconds.
No, sir. No, sir. It's two minutes. It's fair, it's fair for all. I appreciate it. We do understand...
I had an open house, and the people of Brickyard...
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Doug Schwartz.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Doug Schwartz, I live at 3129 Ball Court, that's on the north end of Mount Pleasant, near where this property is. Mr. Burnmore is one of the property owners, there's another property owner. I also manage two Caesar Homes divisions, so we are the applicant of this piece, this piece of property. We do believe that this is a solution for a failed commercial venture. It has failed once, it is run bankrupt, so it's come out, and it's failed twice, but in the spirit of your address, Madam Mayor, we want to inform and educate, and having heard the comments, don't feel like that has been fully done on our part. We will be, and as well, we've got some contractual things to work out with the two property owners. As such, we will be requesting a tomorrow decide.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there anyone here to sign up to speak on this? Anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? This panel hearing is closed. Item number six is the approval of minutes from the October 14th, 2014 Town Council meeting and the October 2014 financial statement. Motion in a second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Item number seven, correspondence and public statements.
Sean Barnes.
Yes, sorry.
I'm here, I was just wondering if we can amend the agenda, I'm sorry, I probably should have done it earlier, I was too busy listening earlier. And to move up item number 11, council new business, discussion of permanent allocation program, most of these folks are here tonight, and we can move that up early, so we have an opportunity to give a home a big name.
Is that a formal motion, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move item number 11A, under council business, new business, discussion of Mount Pleasant building permit allocation, and we will move that to item 8A. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes here?
Hey, my name is Sean Barnes, I grew up in the area, I have a business in 11. I live on 1418 Barbara Street, and my concern is for the children. I have one that's 24 now, I have one at 6, but since the rednourishment of Coleman Boulevard, it seems that all the track has been driven down Center and McCann's. And so, I'm not, I can't even let my little girl ride down the street. They, they redid Center before they started doing those townhouses, I believe they're called the Boulevard, and, anyway, I, I can't even go down that street. People are going 45, 50 miles an hour. Well, I'll say 45, okay? But we need to get some speed bumps, some stop signs like they do over there in Cotton Hills. I mean, they're going, they're about just going down the streets. You know, when you talk about community, it made me feel good, because we are a community, and we need to work together, and we need to take care of our children that are here. So, I thank you for your time, and y'all, I would like to thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Bert Zidley.
I'm still talking about roads, putting up any of these hearings, is that all right?
Oh, absolutely, sir, this is public comment. You have two minutes, talk as you will. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bert Zidley, 40 Vincent Drive here in Mount Pleasant, lived here 35 years. Everybody is concerned about traffic more than anything else you showed up here on the screen. Now, I spent six years in the military, two years overseas, and I've seen all kinds of buckets of sand that you can see. I served, worked for Palm Gill Yard, I worked for Blair White, and I've worked for several, I was tail manager for Isle of Palms until Max Capper came in, and I would just as soon be a character on The Walking Dead and to work with that man.
You're right.
Nothing you people are going to say tonight is going to convince any of these people to change anything, y'all won't change, their minds are made up. They can stop the growth, but that's not really advisable. They can slow the growth is what should be done. There is more traffic here on these highways now than we've ever had before, and there is no way you're going to stop it unless you widen it. And to make matters worse, between the Smithsonian on TV, National Geographic, the Wall Street Journal, the Charlotte News, in the next 50 years, water is going to be three feet higher at the beaches coming this way, three feet. That means the houses on the beach are going to be underwater. In the next 100 years, it's going to be six feet higher. That's going to come to Coleman Boulevard. I don't care what you do to Coleman Boulevard now, in 100 years, it's going to be gone. Thank you for your time.
Agita Tankersley.
We're not quicken yet, no ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the town council. My name is Anita Tankersley. I live at 1297 Waterfront Drive for the past 21 years. Before that, I lived in the older area of this town since moving to Mount Pleasant from downtown Charleston in March of 66. I've lived in the Charleston area over 51 years. During those years, I've seen a lot of changes happening in the area, some good and some not so good. I will try not to burden you with reiterations of all that has gone on in the passing time. You're no doubt more aware of that than I am. In most all civilized orders of assorted people living in groups, whether those are enclosed within a city or municipal bodies, state, or our entire country, for a smoother, more organized arrangement of government, the person chosen to take care and run things are essentially hired to be public servants, to administer the wants, wishes, and needs of the people living within that entity, whether it be local, state, or national government. The persons wishing to be placed in a position of public service campaign for the job, telling the concerned people what each of them promised to do if they are elected, or, for want of a better word, hired for the public office or position. An election is held for the people to choose which candidates seem to be best suited for the job, very similar to an individual applying for a job with a company, corporation, or firm environment. The applicant usually fills out an application, submits a resume, and goes through an interview, parallel that again with attempting to get elected to public office.
How about 10 more seconds?
I've got 10 seconds.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Are we sure you didn't count someone on the ballot?
I did count, yeah, you're on the ballot.
Okay, I don't know of any place where someone could, whatever. Oh, I just didn't finish my notes.
No, 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 what's your want?
I'll continue it next month.
You sure?
Yeah, I'll take that.
You sure?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you get real concise, and we'll see you next month, how about that? She can, but she said she rambled in her notes, so we wouldn't want to bear-
Phyllis Chaffer.
I know, so.
So, is Chaffer, came down Charleston 52, married the local boy, Wally Chaffer, moved to Isle of Palms in 53, and we strummed for 38 years. And I love this town. Even though I lived on Isle of Palms, now I'm living in a town, Linda's mom and dad were the only place on Coleman Boulevard back then when she was this high. We have a marvelous town, and I don't know that I'm going to vote for any of you all to come back in, and I know it's not your fault, it's for you, and I believe in growth, but the right kind, and these horrible looking apartments that are going up, that look like matchsticks everywhere, and the trees that they're taking down, and J.C. Longwood rolled over his grave. He planted seaside farm, and the area that we had, y'all know that, and we just, I want to grow too, but I want neighborhood, I want like we've got, like we came here to live. This was a beautiful place, and we're going crazy. Absolutely, y'all, people allow things to happen here that are not attractive, that are not safe, that are up to the sidewalk, and I say shame, I really say shame, and I know that you're picking up something that's on plans that you inherited, but it's sad, and I hope that we can just replace all of you all.
Thank you.
Hi, Glenn Gav, 737 Bluefield Drive. Just stole my butter. What do we got, something? It's a traffic circle, real exciting, Spaghetti Junction. It's what, $600 million to build, and we can fix it if it doesn't work? I got an idea. Let's take a fork at it. Let's spend the money somewhere else, because, what, there's a fork already there? That intersection works just fine. What you could do to make that growth, stop building all these apartments, put a fork at it, put a fork at everything, just stand back, take a breath, put a more time, let's take a look, we're going on, these apartments going up all over the place. That's, that's not funny. And what's going to happen is they're all going to be empty one day when these hipsters and Gen Xers and stuff like that get married and they want to build a house, they want to move into a house, raise a family, and so nobody's going to live in these apartments. We're going to be looking at them. So, please, let's take a step back, there's no hurry, we've got plenty of time.
Thank you, Glenn.
Ladies and gentlemen, the town of Mount Pleasant is strong enough to clear its roads, restore community, and hold back the ocean. We have the fastest growing-
We need your name and address, please, sir.
William Hamilton, 32 Soul Street Ion, remember? We were going to ruin Mount Pleasant 20 years ago. I would like to, I would like to thank everyone that helped up, we have the highest, we have the fastest growing bus routes in the car system. I'd like to thank the volunteers from Wando High School that helped us on Saturday, including three people from the Snouton community that lost their bus route 18 months ago, and gave us an entire Saturday of work reaching out to people along North 17 so they could keep their improved bus route. I'd like to thank, thank council member Ken Glasson for riding the bus and not telling the four bus drivers who he was till he got off, and I told him that he was a member of the car board at Mount Pleasant Town Council. You have never seen a bus driver that scared. Next week, on Monday through Wednesday, they're going to be holding meetings about the future of transit in Charleston. They're focusing on a train between Somerville and Charleston. They keep, they keep, they seem, they keep to seem to forget Mount Pleasant. We're going to remind them, please be at 5:30, be at the intersection of Ann Street, Mead Street on Monday night, we're going to protest, we're going to go into their meeting and make sure that they remember Mount Pleasant, instead of just thinking about Somerville. I'm, I'm happy to tell you that a whole group of people worked on a better bus stop near where the Sunoco gas catch is going in, near Gregory Ferry Landing Apartments. On Saturday, we met with them, we distributed transit information to 237 apartments. Partnership is developing, they're building a really great bus stop near 41 and 17, so the people living in those apartments can ride the bus together, get to know their neighbors, and hold back the ocean by reducing the amount of carbon going into our atmosphere. We are not powerless. If we unshackle this community from the automobile, we will know our neighbors, we will be a community again, and we will solve our problems. But if we continue to insist on that everyone should drive everywhere all the time, we will fail, the ocean will cover, in 100 years, you won't have to worry about the Boulevard, because you'll need Scoob in here to visit it.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you all very much, that's all I have under correspondence and public statements. And moving on to item number eight, we have moved up a item under new business, and that is the discussion of Mount Pleasant building permit allocation program. Mr. Santos?
Madam Mayor, yes. I'm asking this item to be placed on the town council's agenda, because the issue of unvital growth in our community must be addressed, and you can hear from citizens. We should be proud that so many people want to live in this, in Mount Pleasant. We have a great, we have a great community, and we should understand that growing too quickly threatens our quality of life. I'm not opposed to growth and development, but I am opposed to unvital growth fueled by market conditions. So, we must manage our development, and it is town council's job to do this. Whether a new building permit allocation program is the right instrument today to manage growth, I do not know. But I do know that it's time now to study growth control measures before Mount Pleasant's quality of life becomes rapidly damaged. Therefore, council member Stokes Marshall was kind enough to offer to put this item on the December planning committee's agenda to review it and to come back with some ideas. There's a lot of ideas, I think, that are out there, I've heard a lot of ideas, and it's great now that we're starting to hear some ideas, and I don't know, Mayor, you have some ideas as well, I heard you talk tonight and say that, so, I'm really excited that we can get the conversation going about managing the growth. So, I understand that I don't need to make a motion according to Mr. Pat Gurey, so, at this time, I would just like to say, Mr. Stokes Marshall, thank you for having this on your agenda for the planning committee meeting on December.
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate your conversation about growth, it's been on all of our minds and our hearts, and I know we'll do the right thing, and I look forward to that December meeting. Do we have anyone to speak on this issue specifically?
We do, ma'am. Cheryl Gregory.
Ms. Cheryl, you know the routine.
Thank you, Gary, for putting that on the agenda tonight. Thank y'all for allowing it to go into December planning. We need to look at this, slow it down. Linda, I want to ask you something. You said you wanted a united front of your council members? Your council members, they're our council members.
Thank you very much, it's noted.
And they should be individual? Don't, don't be united front. You stand up for the people out here. You stand up for me. If, if you want to say something, say it. Be a Gary Santos. He's the one and only one that has called for community meetings. He's got us all here, giving up our time. Everyone, you should do that. And shame on you, if you decide united front, thank you very much.
My name is Jimmy Bagwell, I live at 207 Williams Street here in Mount Pleasant. I've been a resident of Mount Pleasant all of my life. And the reason I'm here tonight is to speak on behalf of a new organization here in Mount Pleasant called Save Sham Creek Corporation. called Save Shem Creek Corporation. A group of concerned citizens who have attended these meetings for the last year, year and a half, and having been sort of frustrated, to be perfectly honest, with the reception that we've received and the decisions that have been made. And even though we have made some progress, I still feel like we have a long way to go. So we have organized, we have a board, and we are getting new members of this corporation every day. There's been so much said here tonight. And I know how Mr. Chapper feels. I feel the same way. But we've got to work together. Linda, I enjoyed your speech tonight. I think you said a lot of very positive things.
Absolutely.
But we have got to get this thing under control. Growth is out of control. We are not managing growth, we are facilitating growth. We have done everything that this town could do to make it possible for people to come into this town, make money, leave, go away, and leave us with a nothing left. Growth does not enhance the quality of life just for growth sake. What enhances the quality of life is sense of community. And if we continue to grow like we are, we'll have a hundred thousand people in the year 2030. That'll be twice as many people as we had in the year 2000. That is way beyond the growth rate of this United States. And we are gonna be all over each other, we're gonna be on top of each other. We need to limit the number of apartments. We need to limit the residential growth in our outer areas. The reason we formed Save Shem Creek Corporation was to preserve the nature and character of this beautiful town. I told some people that they never planned on getting this involved. The reason I am is because I cannot go to sleep at night thinking that I didn't do something to preserve the character of this town. And so with your help and with the help of the citizens in this audience, we're gonna do everything we can possibly do to make sure that we don't lose what made this the great place it is and the reason people wanna live here. We don't have to give everybody a place to live. We can manage this growth, not facilitate it.
Thank you.
So we look forward to working with you in the future.
Look forward. Thank you, Jimmy. We look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you very much.
Look forward.
You're welcome.
I don't have a comment, thank you.
Oh, is she?
Pat Sullivan?
Ms. Sullivan? That's fine.
I'll wait over there.
Thank you. Okay. No one else to sign up to speak on this issue? No action is needed? Miss America, we know you can. You're welcome to come to my office at any time you like. Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely. Come forward. Say your name and address. You have two minutes.
My name is Joe Calandra. I live at twenty-five fourteen Harriet Island Court. I've been a resident here for twenty years. I would like to ask the council, how many, by a raise of hand, I'm allowed to do this, how many of you are for limiting growth?
Yes, sir.
I'm not allowed to do it.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll inform the council that there was a poll today. Seventy-two percent of your constituents, the people who put you there, are in favor of limiting growth. That was today's poll. Seventy-two percent were in favor. My godson's a state senator in New York. He serves his people, and that's how he unseated incumbents. Be aware, seventy-two percent of the people are in favor of limiting growth. The traffic on Seventeen is now, north of Chup Dolly is as bad as it was before you widened Seventeen. I don't know how many of you live there, I know two do. That is a disaster already, coming down Forty-one. When I came here, there was a line of traffic from Dunes Boulevard all the way to Forty-one. We need to limit growth, we need to plan for growth. When we talk about these little parcels, oh, it's only five acres, and we're gonna put townhomes. Well, you put two hundred homes on five acres of land, that's gonna be four hundred people, four hundred cars. A sixth grader knows that four hundred cars are gonna jam up the roads. You need to be a ninth grader to know four hundred people, instead of maybe twenty, that would be in five single-family homes. Four hundred people are gonna use more water, more electricity, have a bigger carbon footprint. You need to be a ninth grader to know that. I'm sure most of you passed the ninth grade. Most of the people here passed the ninth grade. We need to be smart about our growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, no action is needed on this item, so we'll move on to planning. Ms. Farrell? Yes, ma'am.
Planning for this house, the first group item that we have is a request for annexation. Five parcels of land, this is three point three eight acres located on Annie Lower Lane and Gulf Drive. It's been recommended for approval by the annexation committee.
We have provided one, two, and three.
Is there a second?
Mr. Scott?
Okay. So we have a motion, and do we have a second on the, just for the first item, first reading? I know, and we drew, and then he... Thank you. We have a motion and a second for first reading of an ordinance providing for the annexation of five parcels of land. And we have two speakers signed up.
One of our...
Twenty-one, twenty-six Gulf Drive. I'm actually, I've been a resident for over twenty years at the location. And the spots that he's talking about developing are actually in desperate need to be developed. I'm sure y'all are aware of the neighborhood. It's not the best neighborhood. It's one of the places in Mount Pleasant that have been left, come to like, in the dark. It's not the best place to be. There's drug homes, there's drug activity, it's well-known drug activity that goes on there. There's single-family homes that are businesses that are being ran out of it. So I feel like it would be in the best benefit of town Mount Pleasant and the neighborhood to finish the last three lots that he has on the back to develop into homes. He's already done the first half of Annie Lower Lane, and it's awesome, it's made a huge improvement. And I feel like for the whole environment, for the whole community, it would make a huge difference. And feel a lot better towards the children's area and for the people as well, for Gulf Drive to be developed for that, those few lots that are left open that need to be built on. And that's basically all. I feel like everyone would be in its best interest to develop it and help out and pick up the area a lot better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Boris?
I'm Toria Boris. I live at twenty-one, twenty-four. I grew up with Wando, we were neighbors. I too think that this would be the best. And then to us, there's a lot of negativity, drugs, nastiness at the other end. What he has done so far has improved a lot. I think that it'll continue. My father raised his grandkids on this spot. I don't wanna raise mine. There's too much drug activity going on if they don't stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our motion and a second for the annexation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item's carried.
First reading ordinance number one four zero seven six, an ordinance providing for the annexation of five parcels of land providing approximately three point three eight acres located on Annie Lower Lane and Gulf Drive.
Thank you. Item number two?
Yes, the next item that we have is for the same parcels of land. You just had the public hearing earlier on the agenda for a request to change the land use designation from community conservation to medium density. It is for the five parcels of land that have been highlighted on the map. That have been highlighted on the land use map. So you see these five, they're not all contiguous to one another, but the five have been highlighted on the plan map. This was reviewed by the planning commission and recommended approval. The planning committee recommended approval by a vote of two to one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
All that blue is the town's...
Yes, that is the town's public works facility.
Is that a line that goes off up to Annie Lower, that touches the Dr. Colossus, belongs to that?
Yes, it does. Yes.
What's that about?
This was acquired by the town several years ago. We don't use it at this point in time.
It's all like a narrow line that goes up to, that touches the Colossus, is that what we tell you?
That's just the access to your doctor.
Any questions? Yes, it was time to say, Mr. George.
Ms. Farrell, I think it was at least last month or the month before, where there was some discussion in reference to changing the Overlake District and whether or not the county council was in agreement with these recommended changes.
Yes, ma'am. The conversation that we've had recently with Charleston County about the Sweetgrass Overlake District was really more for what we would call the Old Georgetown Loop. There were some residents who live in the Old Georgetown Loop area who've expressed some interest in possibly working with the town and the county again to make some modifications. But there has not been any discussion for any of these areas in particular that you see in the yellow on the plan map to make any modifications to the densities.
Okay, so the project that was in front of us a few months ago, and we had the discussion about whether or not the town's Overlake District was a conjunction with Charleston County. And yes, there were residents here who expressed a desire to support that kind of change. That does not affect this project in any way?
No, ma'am, it was not. I mean, the more recent conversations have been the Old Georgetown area. There certainly, within this past year, was a request at the intersection of Rifle Range Road and Sixth Mile where I think there were some folks that were supportive, there were others who were not with that request.
And the reason why I asked the question because you all, when the Overlake District was created, the town working with the county, and as a result of that, what we're seeing now is that there are more residents or property owners who are within that Overlake District who are now requesting to be moved. Clear problem. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrier?
Christine, can you explain the exclusion of the one lot?
It's not been excluded, it's just not contiguous, and so I felt that it was relevant to point that out. That would be this particular piece of property right here. There had been, and we spoke to this during the planning committee, there had been, I think, some discommunication between the property owner and the applicant because the applicant for the rezoning and the annexation and the comprehensive plan amendment for all of these properties had indicated to staff that he wanted to withdraw this particular property that's not contiguous to the rest. However, the property owner contacted staff and indicated that he would like to proceed. So it is still on your agenda, along with all the other four properties. I was really more trying to point out that it's just not contiguous to the other four.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, good evening. Thank you. The first, what we just did right before this was the annexation.
Yes, sir.
For the legally, you know, can his act become within the town of Mount Pleasant, correct? And it takes a couple of votes. And then this is a separate matter altogether. This is a comprehensive plan change being also requested by the council.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what is the current use designation for there? If we did nothing, what would come into happen?
It would, if there were no change, a request to change the comprehensive plan, and there were also not a zoning request, then the property would all just be annexed in as community conservation.
And how does that change the, really, the units per acre? I guess that's what we're talking about. I assume what they're asking for is more units per acre. Can you give me, what it is currently and what would...
The difference would be, community conservation is three units per acre, and then what is requested is medium density, which is a maximum of six units per acre.
And the planning commission, planning commission recommended approval, the planning committee also recommended approval, but it was a split vote, is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrier?
The two speakers referenced lots already developed, and these are not developed. And these are the ones back to the single lot that we're looking at? Those are all developed now?
Okay, the lots that are actually under development or nearly completed are these that are up more towards Sixth Mile here. You can see a pond that has been in. But that would be these lots that I would imagine she was speaking about.
On the other side, from the single respective block back to the other green, those are residential houses?
Those are existing homes, yes, sir. The aerial is dated, this aerial is dated, so it just does not show the homes that have been constructed in this area.
And the zoning on the lots that are already developed is that community conservation or medium density neighborhood?
Well, land use would be medium density, and it is medium density for these properties that are right here that are, again, the homes, most of those homes have been constructed, but they're deconstruction. The rest of the properties that you see through here are, many of them are still unincorporated in Charleston County, but they do have a land use designation of community conservation.
So those homes that are already built that don't show on the map are six units per acre?
At a maximum. I don't know what the final density ended up being, but that was the maximum density that was allowed.
Can you refresh our memory a little bit about the Rifle Range Road project? It was on the corner of Sixth Mile Road and Rifle Range Road, which was a similar request. They wanted a comprehensive plan change with more density. Can you refresh our memory on how that went?
That is correct, and it's just off this map, so I can't really point to it, but the property was located or is located at the corner of Rifle Range Road and Sixth Mile. It was larger in size, more acres than what you're seeing reflected on this. But the request with that particular development was also to change the land use map from community conservation to medium density. So a change from three to six in terms of units per acre, that was not approved. The zoning request was approved, a rezoning request was approved, but the comprehensive plan amendment was not.
So we ultimately held true to the density, but we allowed through modification in the zoning request to make the project viable for...
When to put this in a discussion of counting on certain event in town? What difficulties did they have?
Well, there is an annexation and the sewer connection requirements that would become the issue in order to have sewer to the property that would need to be in town Mount Pleasant. So that would be the initial challenge. Beyond that, it would be a rezoning request or potentially a comprehensive plan amendment request to the county, the same as they've submitted to the town.
It's a remarkable discussion and clarification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols, do you have any questions? Mr. Smith? Okay, Mr. Enhill, I'm sorry. I saw a hand, that's all I saw, was a hand.
No, Mr. Nichols referenced my vote earlier from the planning committee, and I think you did as well. My thought process was that we held other folks in the same area to three units per acre, but to allow them to redevelop and to do those things, denying the comprehensive plan request, did not increase the density, but allowed them creativity with how they laid out their lots and their home structures. So, you know, conceivably, an odd-shaped lot or an odd-parted... lot or an odd parcel, they could, within that development, they could meet the current density, but we didn't have to increase the number of units that could be done. So that's, my thought process is just that was what we held on the people doing the same areas. But my vote was we will want us to be consistent with how we treated those folks. So that would why I voted against the comprehensive plan change, but voted for it as any classification. Just to be clear.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification, Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, just off the, and that's where I was exactly going. So the comprehensive plan request, which is what we are talking about right now, can be denied if we so choose. Yet on the next item, we can approve the zoning. It would be zoning at three per acre. Is that right?
Right.
And it'd be up to the folks to see if they can make that work.
Sorry, the future land use map controls what the density, the number of units per acre would be. And then the zoning would control the lot sizes, the minimum lot sizes.
And where we did that, did their project go back? That was just a couple, two, three meetings ago while we were, and, okay, thank you for that.
It was probably about eight months ago. I know it seems like it's not been that long, but it's probably been about eight months ago. Any other questions? What's the favor of the council? No second. Motion fails.
I'll move for denial of the change in the comprehensive plan.
I have a motion and a second for denial to change the comprehensive plan. Plan. All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Opposed? And it fails. Item number three, Ms. Farrell?
This is the zoning request for the same piece of property. The zoning that has been requested is R3, which would determine what the lot sizes would be, as I just explained with the previous item. If this continues to move forward without a comprehensive plan change, then the density would be three units per acre. If the R3 zoning request were approved, the minimum lot size could be 6,000 square feet. And the difference between the R3 lot size and the CC lot size is 12,000 square feet, 12,500 square feet versus 6,000 square feet. So they would have some flexibility, could potentially result in some additional open spaces.
Move for a second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any eyes carried?
Madam Mayor, I, the applicant, he understands what's taking place here because he's been annexed. He has enough, he has a lot to figure out what he wants to do. I just know that I'm sure someone reaches out to him to converse the situation.
Yes. Let me read the ordinance.
First reading ordinance number 14078, in order to zone R3, medium density residential district, five tracts of land comprising approximately 3.38 acres, located on Andy Lower Lane, Hill Drive. Again, I'd like to thank the council for the consideration of the project and that there. As I said, these are currently already, it's intensity on this tract with the sewer end here. It will never extend across here, and this would have to be interconnected because there isn't a circle for finer or anything else to be done here. All of these utilities must be isolated. This lot right here is seven inches an acre. You're rolling one and a half lots. Doesn't work. Lots right here, the road has to come down and connect like that. With density being disproved, the project's not viable. There's just no way to put that kind of infrastructure in. Again, this is where the dust exists. It's basically dirt, and it's been that way for many years. And it just, these were brought into the city, but they don't have the benefit of the city road, the sidewalk, the driveway, the personal term, and the government, the county. This lot is the one going out now. This was approved from Mrs. Hurd in the same zoning area. But what I did going forward, just that amount of lots, unfortunately, it's just not feasible. Much that I would love to help them do this with this, with that size, and the cost of infrastructure, we only ended up with one, two, three, four, five, six lots. This is seven inches here also. That's one and a half homes on that one. It just doesn't make the project feasible, no matter how, how we go. So the area will remain, it's eventually just going to remain the same as what it is. That's been, I lived right here for 35 years. When I moved here, this was, was nothing here. This road, when this was in, on the earth track, that fill was actually removed from there and no history of construction. And that was used to build Sixth Mile Road.
Thank you very much. That's your two minutes, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Farrell, item number four.
The next item that we have on the agenda is a request to rezone a parcel of land from area-wide business to AB2. This is actually two parcels of land, excuse me. It's 1.388 acres. These are located at 1426 and 1463, Highway 17. I bet you'll be a little bit more familiar with it. Aerial photograph here is Lam's Auto. So these properties are just off that frontage road next to Highway 17, and then it's 526. The planning commission held a public hearing on this, and they did recommend approval of the rezoning from AB to AB2. The planning committee, however, did not recommend approval, and the reason being that it was after some discussion that the land use designation for this piece of property is intended to change, assuming final reading of the comprehensive plan later here on the agenda, that the planning committee felt that the change in land use from commercial to by business like industrial economic development did not support the requested zoning and therefore recommended denial.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, move for deferral for the second.
For clarification of defer for length of time? So we have a motion for deferral and a second. Any other discussion?
Move for a second.
I heard a second here.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Heard something.
Discussion.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council member, last one, Mr. Smith. Appreciate that. Is the applicant here? Is that a request to keep?
Yeah, for the, for the, to defer for the.
Are they, are they here?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind giving them thirty seconds?
Uh, certainly. Say your name and address. I'll give you two minutes. I'm not very liberal with my two minutes, but I'd sort of like to give you two minutes.
My name is Aaron Rowley. I live at A85 Rental Drive in the old village. We're requesting a motion for deferral because there was a, seemed to be a lack of clarity in the committee's council meeting last week of the designated land use plan versus the zoning. So we'd like a little more, a little more time to gain that clarity and also talk with more downtown council.
Ninety days, is that what you're asking for?
Even less. Next town council meeting, thirty days will be fine.
Wow. Question?
Yes, sir.
How far? Back as your property go? That long line, how far does it go?
It's this entire triangular shape right here.
What's the line? The long line on the north side?
Of this here.
Yeah, what is it?
That is Lam's Autobody Shop.
Okay.
And all these parcels are in the town. It's Lam's Autobody, Bottom Lawn Nursery, and MBSC Bank.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's a tradition, at least mine, that people look for referrals for a reasonable length of time we usually give ours. I'm just playing devil's advocate. Thirty days, tis the season of Thanksgiving and Christmas. I, I just want, do you feel confident that you're going to be able to, whatever it is you need to do?
Yes, sir.
Educate us and others. You can do it thirty days?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second for deferral. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, Bell Hall.
This request is to amend the Bell Hall Plan Development District ordinance. This is for a property that's located on Wonday Park Boulevard. This request is pertaining to the maximum lot coverage. We've seen a very similar request more than once. There is a lot coverage requirement in the Wonday Park portion of the Bell Hall Plan Development. It's not something that's in our town where it says.
First reading.
I have a motion, two, actually, I have two motions, one for change and a second. That's fine. I had two motions at the same time.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. Chris?
Second and first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any eyes carried?
First reading ordinance number 14080, in order to provide for the Zune's Bell Hall Plan Development District Ordinance, as a matter pertaining to maximum lot coverage for a portion thereof.
Thank you. Item number six?
Madam Mayor, during the public hearing on this item, a representative did indicate that they wanted to request a deferral. So before I proceed with the presentation, I don't know if you all wanted to hear from them again on that request or entertain that request?
Is this for item six and seven?
I think they need to clarify that, but I'm.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a request from the developer for item six and seven for deferral. I have a motion and a second. Now discussion?
Yeah, I think the developer just stood up. Mr. Schwartz, can you tell us for how long since that? Thirty, thirty days is what we've been requesting. Thirty days, really? Remember, you mentioned early season coming up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for deferral on items number six and seven on the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any eyes, either of us? Item number eight?
Item number eight is a request to amend the Dunes West Plan Development Ordinance for a proposed development to be known as the Fishing Village. You actually have two items, items eight and nine, that are both related to the Fishing Village. But this one is the zoning request, item number eight. The current Dunes West Plan Development map shows this area as R1. The way the specific request is to modify this particular area to allow a variety of lot sizes. So it would be R1, R3, as well as RTH Townhouse lot sizes that would be permitted in this particular area. And that has been reviewed by the planning commission as well as the planning committee, and has been recommended for approval.
First reading. Second.
Item number six? Oh, in eight, I'm sorry. In eight. Item number eight. We have a motion and a second for item number eight on the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes carried?
First reading ordinance number 14083, in order to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District Ordinance regarding the portion thereof known as the Fishing Village.
Item number nine?
This is the impact assessment and conceptual plan for the Fishing Village at Dunes West. And so you do see the conceptual plan up on the screen. The impact assessment was reviewed, and there were no mitigation measures that were found to be necessary with this particular proposal. I know that Mr. Morrison also reviewed the traffic impact, and they do have some improvements that are shown to be, to be made. But the planning commission has reviewed this. I will note, just for clarification, they are at this point in time showing two entrances into the property. One is in front of the gate, one is behind the gate. This is all off of Highway 41 in Harper's Ferry. Ultimately, the plan is that this particular gate, which will enter into the model village, which will be model homes, will close once these further phases of the Fishing Village are complete. And this will be the sole entrance off of Harper's Ferry into the Fishing Village. The planning commission, as well as the planning committee, both recommended approval to include all staff comments, and that would include any transportation improvements that may have been in Mr. Morrison's report.
First reading. Second.
I have a motion and a second for first reading, and I have a question for Mr. Garch.
Ms. Farrell, tell us about the walkway that this developer brings on the border of Marsh. Where does it run from where to where?
Yes.
And how wide is it?
They have shown a path within the critical line buffer. And so you can see it starts generally in this area, so it doesn't extend necessarily the whole entire boundaries of the property, but extends especially in the Wondo, towards the Wondo area here. Throughout the critical line, this is permitted by our ordinance, as we do allow pervious paths to be within the critical line buffer. Critical line buffer has to be an average of 35 feet in width. And the only, one of the few disturbances that is, that is allowed is to be, to have a pervious path through it. So this will create opportunities throughout the community for folks to have access to the water.
But there's no, there's no docks that have access to the river.
I, they, they did not show any on any of their plans. This is an amenity area right here, and did not indicate that there would be any such thing. I kind of understood that that more to be like a swimming pool type of amenity.
No docks? We have a motion, Mr. Smith?
At the entrance, there's only one way in and one way out at that point.
Yes, ma'am. The gate for Dunes West on Harper's Ferry is right here. And as everyone on council is aware, the Dunes West is private streets that are anything behind the gate. And so the access would be limited. Once, once the model home village is complete and the majority of the base is sold, this entrance will be closed. And the only entrance will be off of Harper's Ferry behind the gate.
Who else has a number of residential?
They, this conceptual plan is showing 139. They do have the ability, per the impact assessment, to go up to 150, which could be accomplished by obviously making a few adjustments with some lot subdivisions.
I have this question because when we look at some of the other developments along Highway 41, where you've only got one way in and one way out, you know, I just don't see that as being a positive position, you know, when you've only got one way in and one way out, especially when you have that number of residential facilities.
If I may, let's go, of course, I'll just say, I appreciate your point. Please note that that one way in, one way is within inside that neighborhood. It has nothing to do with the access off of 41. That's a restriction they're putting on themselves.
Is that, sorry?
So the one that they're closing.
I think to Mr. Garch's point, Dunes West still has two ways in, the Harper's Ferry and then Wondo Plantation are the, are the two access points, the two to Dunes West as a whole. But this particular portion, the Fishing Village, would only have the one access into it. And I, I think it is a little more complex because this is the property that's located closest to Highway 41. And, and we did get into some discussion at the planning commission about the stacking of cars that can sometimes occur as people wait to get into the guard gate. So I think the guard gate is pushed back to, in order to provide sufficient space so that we don't have people stuck on Highway 41, right, waiting to get into the neighborhood. And then I guess with just the topography here, and you can see where the land actually ends, they're very, have very limited space from here at the guard gate to the end of that property to provide more than one access point. And it still maintains a private street that's allowed to be Dunes West.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for approval. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was that a notice of question? And the motion carries. Item number 10 is the first reading. I believe 10 and 11 both have to do with the Johnson Tribe.
Yes, ma'am. The first item that we have is the request to rezone. This would be two parcels of land on Highway 17 and James Nelson. This would be the rezone for multifamily and area-wide business to planned development mixed use. The proposal that is in front of you, again, the, the request is to rezone a 31-acre tract of land here, currently zoned multifamily, as well as a 6.8-acre tract of land located here at the end of James Nelson, currently zoned for area-wide business, to rezone both of them to planned development mixed use. This development proposal does include an impact assessment and conceptual plan. That's the next item on your agenda. The proposal that has been submitted is for 456 dwelling units. These will be apartments, 62,000 square feet of commercial, a 150-room hotel, and then between 600 to 800 unit storage. Sixty-two thousand square feet of commercial, a one hundred and fifty-room hotel, and then between six hundred to eight hundred, um, unit storage facility. The comprehensive plan land use recommendation for this property is high density, which with an appropriate plant, mixed-use plan development, does afford a maximum density of twelve units per acre, which is what has, um, been calculated in order to achieve the four hundred and fifty-six dwellings. The zoning part, um, was reviewed by the Planning Commission who held a public hearing, and they did have, um, several, in addition to, they did recommend approval, but they included with that several, um, recommendations. Those are presented to you in your ordinance that is up for first reading, and so I will go through each of those. The first item that is in, included, uh, within the ordinance is, um, a statement that the base density on the acreage shall be for the multifamily area only unless the land uses are better integrated. Um, the, the developer, I believe, is going to demonstrate to you tonight that they have tried to address this particular comment in order to allow for the density to be calculated over the entire thirty-eight, um, acres of land. And if that is the case, then there might need to be a modification to the wording of that particular part of the ordinances. The second is that all buildings within the development would be subject to the design review approval. Ordinarily, the multifamily would not, however, it has been recommended that, in this particular case, that all of those would have to go through the process with the design review board. Uh, third, to provide bicycle parking in accordance with the town's new ordinances for bicycle parking. So, uh, fourth is that tree mitigation would be in compliance with the town's ordinances. They had requested some exceptions. Uh, however, the Planning Commission recommended to adhere to the town's tree ordinance. That the parking would be in accordance with the, uh, as shown on the plan. Uh, also to recognize that there may need to be some adjustments to the plan map as a result of design review board approval, as long as the access, the stormwater, and this infrastructure would largely remain the same. Next is to specify the building heights that were requested because the original submittal only indicated number of floors. So staff specifically requested that heights, um, be, um, specified. So at the public hearing, the applicant indicated the following. That the multifamily buildings would be allowed fifty-five feet in height, the hotel would be forty-five, that the storage facility would be forty feet, that the commercial, um, uh, buildings would be thirty feet. And then finally, then any structures that are located within fifty feet of residential property outside of the boundaries of this particular development would be limited to two floors. And so those were all of the, um, additional recommendations that were made by the Planning Commission that were relevant to the zoning. There are some additional conditions that were recommended with the impact assessment that would include, um, Mr. Morrison's comments as well, and I'll be glad to review those at the appropriate time. But that is the recommendation that was, um, made by the Planning Commission and the Planning Committee, and, um, is included in your ordinance, all of those specifics that I just reviewed.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
I want to proceed truly get this right. I want to make a motion to approve, uh, the organs about my add in additional, uh, condition. It's very agreeable, the second has to be amended. Yes, sir, it would. You, if you wanted to move, you can move to approve, and then upon, if it gets a second, then there could be a motion made to amend. Excuse me, the amendments really should be made at final reading on this, so I'm gonna preview it. On where, yeah. I'll see if anyone else is interested in the motion now, or my discussions.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
I didn't, I, I actually did make the motion.
Okay, I thought you did, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
For first reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for first reading. Any further discussion? Mr. Santos.
And Madam Mayor, um, Christiane, we talked a little bit earlier about this, I think with the, uh, if we do make this change, um, based on the dwelling units and the hotel, you know, basically double density of that development. Based on what it would be if we did not make the change.
Well, if I could be more specific, um, uh, in response to your question, the, the current zoning of multifamily on the thirty-one acre tract, and then you have area-wide business on the six-point-eight acre tract. Um, with, with that, in terms of looking at the number of dwelling units that could be accomplished with those two zoning districts, the total would be three hundred and sixty-three. Area-wide business is the only zoning district that would allow any of the commercial uses. So multifamily that's current, the way that particular parcel, the thirty-one acres, would only allow the apartments. So any commercial could only go on the six-point-eight acre tract of land, which is, is this one, as you, you see the zoning right here, uh, for this. And, um, typical rule of thumb with commercial development is about ten thousand square feet per acre. Six-point-eight acres would yield about sixty-eight thousand square feet. The proposal that's been brought forth includes sixty-two thousand square feet, so that's fairly comparable. But it does, um, the, the planned proposal does provide in addition, uh, the proposal for a hotel and a storage facility.
Okay. So in just in English here, 'cause I, I knew.
I, I can't say double the density, because the dens- density, the density, the number of total units that can be accomplished under the current zoning is three hundred and sixty-three. What's been requested is four hundred and fifty-six. So that's a difference of ninety-four.
Okay, ninety-four, but then you have the, the hotel that's kind of a hundred and fifty-six.
The square footage. The square footage difference is, they, they've asked for sixty-two thousand worth of, of, of just general commercial, restaurants on it. And then also a hotel and a storage facility. I don't know what the square footage of either of those would be. It's a hundred and fifty-room hotel, um, I, I, I don't know how many square feet that would be.
Right, but the hundred and fifty-three rooms on top of that ninety-one is, you know, well, double what it would be if it was zoned the way it is currently now as far as the density. If you, if you add the hotel rooms and the, um, dwelling units.
If you count hotel rooms as, as a residential unit?
Well, you've got people staying there every night, so, um, I'm kind of, right, it may not technically be the same, but you still have people staying there, you have cars there, you're gonna have traffic getting out of there. I mean, from, I guess, for me, uh, in my simple way, I kind of look at that as like a, like, I guess, a dwelling unit, 'cause if people don't be there every night, it's, it's almost the same thing, right? I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
So what could be more, what has been proposed that is more than can be accomplished right now with the current zoning would be ninety-four dwelling units, the hundred and fifty-room hotel, and the storage facility. That's what's more than what the current is only allowed.
Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Christiane, you inch, uh, mentioned that representatives of the applicant, uh, shared some adjustments that were made with concerns having to do with integration. In other words, you know, is the mixed-use concept that is very, we're very interested in, and that they, was a plan to address, hopefully, maybe even right now. And, and I'd like to hear what, uh, some of the differences that they've come up with since our meetings a week or two ago, where we were presenting something, 'cause I had some personal concerns. Is the, is the applicant here, is he willing to make, address us with some latitude, Madam Mayor? I'd like to hear what they've, uh, come up with in the last week or two.
I'll certainly give them their fair two minutes.
I'll give them three.
Mr. Garch?
Before that, Ms. Farrell.
Yes, sir.
Before they, they start, um, can you tell us about, you know, the motion is coming before us. At the end, it says to include staff and planning commission comments and recommendations. Could you speak to that, please?
Um, most of those, or actually all of those, have been included in everything that I just read out loud to you. So those would be, uh, the things such as bicycle parking, as well as compliance with our tree ordinance. Um, I, there, there really wasn't necessarily anything, um, additional beyond that.
And Mr. Poirier, I understand about the meeting, it's second, but I think it's healthy to talk down. I was, I'm not part of the committee, but I was listening to all of them, and some thoughts that I had, obviously, and I, I've conversed somewhat with staff about that. When you build projects of this magnitude, if we're gonna move forward, it's essential, you know, we wanna, wanna talk about phasing. And what, what, how we tie things to COs, to what should be built first. I'm, I'm not the planner, so I'm asking out loud, thinking out loud. How do we tie things, make them the conditions of the approval for the phasing? And when we're done with that, while we're on those things, I'd like to bring Mr. Morrison up. And, uh, I'm sure, hopefully, he can put, maybe he can put something up, so they do talk about the intersection of the river, but I'll stay with the end of the development first.
Um, that is a good question. The, um, submittal that was made by the applicant did indicate that they would have multiple uses in the first phase, which is, of course, very important, 'cause they've asked for a mixed-use TV, which does provide for a higher number of units per acre. Uh, but what was not indicated, um, through this process is, um, how or when that would necessarily occur. So I, I would think that, um, Council very, you know, may want to consider that there be a condition placed within the planned development, um, about ensuring that if, if residential is the first to be built, that some sort of commercial is built at the same time. And there's a couple of different ways that they could go about this. Um, you could require that no permit for the multifamily would be issued until a permit for commercial is also issued. Or they are proposing that there would be some commercial in one of the multifamily buildings, and it could be required that, that those would be built first. I think there's a couple of different options, um, that could be discussed, but I think it would be very important to nail down that if they're gonna have a mixed-use planned development that affords this, this type of density, that there should be a condition about having the, the mixture of uses in that first phase.
Maybe that, Madam Mayor, we can, I, obviously depends upon this vote here. We can work with staff for our next council meeting to lay out those things, 'cause again, I, I, I need Ms. Farrell and her expertise to, to help you with that as far as phasing. You know, like you said, do you residential, do you do some commercial, do you do the park, those types of things? We, we've all done this before, but I, I'm just smart enough to think I'm, I'm saying, I've been letting the experts fill in the blanks for me.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Christiane. The, um, the commercial, there's no, my question, there's no big boxes incorporated in this development? No big box store incorporated?
No, they indicated that the largest, um, would be, I believe, twenty-five thousand square feet. I know that they are, um, potentially looking at trying to attract a small grocery store to the development, and they've indicated that would be the largest commercial footprint.
Just want to put to rest, I've heard from a couple of folks that there would be a Costco in there, and there'd be larger big box stores, I just wanna make sure that's, uh, clear, that there's no proposal for any big box stores at this location within this development. And then my two other quick questions, um, based on the traffic, and this may be where we ask Brad, but I'm sure you know the answer perhaps. Based on the traffic improvements to the area, they studied, there were multiple extensive, um, traffic intersections that were included in that traffic study.
Yes.
And are they, is it my understanding there's about four hundred thousand dollars of improvements to ingress, egress, and, um, right turn ends within scope of this project, it's in the tune of about four hundred thousand dollars of improvements that we realize?
I, I don't know the, the value of it. Perhaps they calculated the value, but those are the site improvements you're speaking of, the termine improvements, they, they probably have a better idea than myself, but that sounds reasonable.
So then the follow-up, I would have, then, in addition to site improvements that they have to do that would be required, there are fees, Madam Mayor, that we charge the town, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. I believe those fees are close to a million dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars.
So our, the fees that we would collect from this, this project, close to a million dollars, would go towards our unfunded, long-term traffic projects, is that correct?
Yes. Any other comments, Mr. Smith?
And I'm in, we'll get you, thank you. Other ideas and notions that have come up since the meeting, and I don't think any of these are unreasonable, I'm just gonna preview them right now, whether tonight's the night, or next month, or whatever. They, uh, indicated, Christiane, that there is, uh, a green open space part located in the center of what they're proposing, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And this council can add as a condition, if we so choose, that that be, making sure it's completely installed with all landscaping before CO is issued, if we so choose.
Yes, sir, and I, I think that would be, um, a very accretive condition to probably place on the impact assessment.
Okay, which is our next item, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Brad, my friend, and don't, uh, if Brad has a recommendation about the right and right out that Councilman Smith just spoke about, we could add that and the timing of that in terms of whether a CO gets issued at what point under the impact assessment as well. We could require that that improvement be.
I think that if that occurs, it should go in with the, uh, with any CO, just because the analysis did not preclude it. Excluded.
I'm sorry, he's our director, uh, emeritus transportation, huh? He knows, he's forgotten more than we'll ever learn. And then finally, and Kevin might be in the room, if he is, we have an engineer as well, and we talk about drainage, which is awfully important in these type of things. And I assume that we could get, uh, the town engineer to give the blessing for the entire site before any building permit is issued as a condition of the impact assessment as well.
I, I think that, um, his, uh, review and approval of the master plan of the site, we know that there's a history of some drainage issues in this particular area, that those all should be, um, coordinated with him and addressed prior to proceeding with any construction.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the hard work of staff responding to some inquiries and some folks that may, uh, in this regard.
Thank you for that, Mr. Nichols. Uh, Mr. Garch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, obviously, you see I have ten, I have eleven, and how they work, and some of the things I asked, obviously, can be tied to eleven impact assessment, but we want to put those things out there, as I mentioned. Um, that being said, from one council member to our, uh, fellow council members, I want you to know that, uh, in my, my almost fourteen years, there have been several plants that have been for this piece of property. It's, uh, it's been right there, for a long time, it was in the center of town, and now, believe it or not, it's no longer in the center of town, it's actually somewhat to the south, as we continue to surge to the north. And, uh, everybody in their brothers look at, and I know there's a lady in the back room back there, I used to give these phone calls, she said, Paul, do you have a minute? Which we meet in an hour and a minute. That's okay. Ms. Walker, good to see you. And she has been giving all her, all her years of service to the Sneak Farm POA. And, and it's because of the, you know, we have projects, one of the first things we do consider is on the impacts to existing neighborhoods. And this one is front, center, two, two, two off to a large section of Sneak Farm, and also in Wando East. But I, I just tell you this, and without sounding like what I had in the initial questions, like trying to shoot a horn something here. And I, I hear Mr. Santos loud and clear, it's, it's, uh, there's some concerns, 'cause you have this, but you have this parcel and you have that parcel. And that's where sometimes the give and take takes place, because now you're wrapping all these parcels, putting them together, and you're really trying to make a good mixed use in the best interest of the town. And my fourteen years, I heard Ms. Walker say to me, oh, y'all must, today, sir, tell her, all of those Sneak Farm, be careful. Don't always keep, don't keep saying no, because you're gonna end up getting something that you don't like at all. Well, they recognize that after a couple of years, and you heard Mr. Smith say, this is not a big box project, it's not the Costco, and the Home Depot, and all those things. But here we have, and I heard Ms. Walker say to the planning committee, she's got a plan, and she's got some folks here that, uh, that she really believes in, and she knows that they'll do a good project for, for the town and for the neighborhood, and she knows, most of the folks Sneak Farm are happy. They, sure, they cut out the, those access points, I understand that, to the neighborhood, the pedestrian access points. You know, it's kind of mixed feelings there, because I, I had a chance when I first lived in Charleston National, when they came in to build a shopping center up front, we quickly realized how much fun it was to go to the grocery store or golf carts. And then I watched the excitement take place of the, the, uh, Hardest Theater on Rivertown, with the Rivertown and the neighborhood above it. But this one's different because, obviously, of all the apartment that, that are there, and I understand the concern that everybody that lives in apartment is gonna wanna take a walk, is gonna wanna walk on the golf course. And so I quickly get that. But again, I, I rambled a little bit on purpose. This, this, this piece here is, uh, one of the last pieces in, in that area, and I, and I think that, folks, we've got, we've got a good one here. And I think that, folks, we've got a good one here. To me, there's a few things we can do with the conditions, and also I haven't gotten there yet as far as impacts on 17. We spent a lot of money, the six lane 17 out there, and it's always been understood, the way the town operates, you know, it's, you create the infrastructure and then the folks want to come in and take advantage of the infrastructure. That's a harsh word, take advantage. But if you're going to come in, you're going to have to pay to make sure that you match the impacts. And it's more, it's more than just the intersection of James Nelson, it's the potential intersection, well, it's the right-in, right-out. Also, take yourself out further, pay attention to how, what's happened in Mount Mathis Ferry in 17. When you want to turn left and go north, there's six cars that can go, and it stops, and that's because of the flow north and south. Well, it's impacted the flow north and south. So there's options there for turn lanes too. To wrap this up, so I can be quiet and let y'all talk, I think we've really got a good thought here, after all the years I've seen people attempt to do something with this. So I credit the players and I credit our staff working with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Garch. I believe we have a motion and a second with a preview of what we might suggest, and also believe that Mr. Garch has indicated that before final reading, if this vote passes, that we would have staff comment and review what we would want to put in as far as impacts.
I would assume that all of us would be, I would assume it would be the second.
Okay, that's fine. And the developer wishes to speak at this time?
I can speak now, I'll read it again.
Thank you very much. Should we have anyone outside that would speak on this issue? Yes, can we wait here to put the citizens before we hear from you, sir?
Can I say something about this?
Have you signed up to speak?
I believe I was signed up ahead of time, I'm not qualified, but...
Okay, we haven't gotten to that issue yet, but we will recognize you when the time's ready.
Thank you.
Leah Coyd?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and participating citizens, for all of your time and commitment to making Mount Pleasant a wonderful community. What you do is huge, and it doesn't get mentioned enough. I've been talking with a good many of our neighbors about this proposed development, and we agree that although it will be a tremendous change for our neighborhoods, it's a pretty good fit. Our main concern is the vehicular connections that were proposed, and my neighbors are vehemently against the possibility of the increase, any increased vehicular traffic on our quiet streets. And I think y'all got my help, word felt emails, so I'll go into that. But it's a very strong, it would be a very strong negative impact to our community. But however, almost everyone that I've talked with wants the pedestrian and bike connections. I understand that there are some Sneefarm residents who do not want the connections to their neighborhood, but we, much wiser hipper folks on this side of the development, see the inherent value of connecting the properties with foot and bike paths. It is our feeling that people are going to be biking, walking dogs with baby strollers, using motorized wheelchairs or golf carts to the grocery store, to go to shop, to go to restaurants, catch the bus, walk around the ponds. School-age children living in the new development will walk through our neighborhood, go to in-front schools that are located in the corner. So we might as well make those connections as safe and as tractable as possible. Paved, well-witted paths would be so much nicer than dirt paths cut through the wooded upper. Another concern of my neighbors is the close proximity of the trash compactor and the dumpsters to existing residences. But I understand the developer plans to move those away from the edges, so, but my neighbors did want me to mention that, so I thought I would. And we just hope that you all will take our suggestions into consideration.
Ms. Coyd, toward the record, could you please tell us what hipper part of the mellet you live on?
Hip department of Wando Lakes. I live at 1661 Lydian.
Thank you, Ms. Coyd.
I'm Mario Roscoe, I have 850 Law Lane in Sneefarm. That's hip adjacent to where the other hipper is. I've seen the plan a couple of times, and I thought they put a lot of thoughtful design into it, so I'm in favor of the plan overall. I have to speak again with the path. I'm also in favor of it, I think it's a really good idea. I'm on Law Lane, so within Sneefarm, I'm going to be probably more impacted than most of the residents around there. And for me, I would rather walk or ride my bike to all these areas, even the town center, versus driving a car. Now, the one thing I really had concerns about with this new development was traffic, but if I can walk, I don't have, I don't care. I mean, it doesn't worry me about that, because I'm going to walk, I'm not going to put another car on the road when I need to go to these areas. So I really like the idea of the path, being there. The one thing I do have concerns, though, with the path is that we have some residents over at the end of our neighborhood, and currently we have a path there right now that they are experiencing. This path was created by, I guess, the youth of Sneefarm and surrounding neighborhoods. And, you know, they just realized this was a natural fit, so they made it. And I guess you could try to stop it by maybe putting a fence in, but I don't know about you guys, but I've never seen a fence stop any kid at all, so. At any rate, I would like it, I would like, I think the developer could really mitigate any of the issues regarding security, any noise, or traffic going through that area. So I think if we put something in that's maintained and managed, we could really create something good for everybody in both neighborhoods, and maybe we will be as hip as Mario.
Jackie Walker.
Sorry for all your time and taking. I sure, I so appreciate you.
It's a pleasure over 25.
37, not 20, 31. It's always a pleasure, it's been a pleasure knowing all of you that I do know, and working with some of you in the 37 years that I've either been just a resident of Sneefarm and Mount Pleasant, and the last 10 years as a board director. Those 37 years in Sneefarm has given me quite a perspective on what Sneefarm was, what we have inherited inherently, what Sneefarm was intended to be. And I don't like to ask questions of council, but have all of you, are all of you familiar with the area that this connectivity area is, they're talking about at the back of Law Lane? So we have property owners very close to that area who are adamantly opposed to this. We have a country club management that is adamantly opposed to it because of the access to the course that a lot of renters, they're not these simple properties, this is not a light community to Sneefarm. That is huge in this evaluation. And the residents have spoken. You've heard from Mario, he is a resident, and I know there's some others here tonight, so they can certainly weigh in. But the board unanimously decided on behalf of the community that we should represent this to you as being in the best interest of Sneefarm. So the comprehensive plan, I've said this to some of you, was not inherent to Sneefarm. And so we need to, I think, respect, or we ask you to respect, the community as it was, you know, developed to be.
Thank you. Again, to the record, could you please say your full name and address?
Jackie Walker, 1038 Loyola Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Sullivan.
Hi Sullivan, 1002 Plantation Court, I live in Sneefarm, and I live in one of the hip areas of Sneefarm. And as far as the connections coming from Wando Lakes and Sneefarm, the Wando Lakes people, I've talked to them, and Leah has said they would like to hit the trail coming in. And Mario commented on one of the advantages is, it'll cut down on one of Mount Pleasant's biggest complaints, and that is traffic. If residents of Wando Lakes and Sneefarm, let's just talk Wando Lakes at the moment, have to come out to 17 and then come back in, that's more traffic on 17. If we can have a trail, just a trail, for bikes and pedestrians, it's, we're going to have happier residents and less traffic. The same thing, I think, will hold for Sneefarm. And I think Mario said that there's already a path there. So either the developer creates a good-looking path from their development, or the neighbor, kids in the neighborhood are going to create one of their own, or enhance the one that they already have. And one last comment on connecting neighborhoods. It's a topic that's come up here before. I think there are a lot of neighborhoods in Mount Pleasant that we can connect, and this came up when we had the bike summit, when, or bike pet summit, a couple of years ago. Lots of people all over town said, please connect our neighborhoods. The advantage of doing that is you're keeping people off of the main road. And it's going to make it safer for them to walk from one neighborhood to another, and safer for people to ride their bikes from one neighborhood to another. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Marie Louise Catsumis, you're signed up for the next item, would you like to speak?
Yes. I'm Marie Louise Catsumis, and I live in 133 Liddy Court in apparently not hip section of Sneefarm. And I just want to state, I am very much against this development for a number of reasons. And we've heard about how like the pass are, they're going to be a wonderful pass, and it's going to cut on traffic. It's not. It's going to increase traffic, because people, yes, people walk, but then they need to get to other places. They need to get to their shopping, their kids need to get to the theater. It's going to really impact traffic, and it's going to be negatively impacting on the residents of Sneefarm, because a lot of people I know are not against this, are against it. And what I want to say to you is, you've heard a lot about what we want, is we want slow development. To me, what the town council has been doing is you're just rubber-stamping it. We know we have growth, we know we need growth, but we need slow, practical growth that maintains a quality of life here and puts an infrastructure in place. You keep this development, we get hit with higher SDNG taxes, fees, et cetera, et cetera, because you don't have the infrastructure already. Wando High School is too small. And when the, at the meeting where the developer was explaining this to the Sneefarm residents, one thing he said is that these apartments are condos, it's going to be transient. That's what we don't need right next to Sneefarm, is a transient community. They don't have an investment in Mount Pleasant. So I ask you really to reconsider this and to slow this growth, and don't ruin this.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Kraus, I live at 665 Dupree Lane, and I am the head of the Health and Wellness Committee for James V. Edwards Elementary School. And as part of that, I work on the grounds of the school. And about a year and a half ago, I went in to meet with Mayor Swales when he was in office for two purposes. The first was to talk about the joint use land agreement between CCESK and the town of Mount Pleasant for the fields behind James V. Edwards. They are not maintained, and both are pointing their fingers at the other person. And I'm trying to get the soccer field, I was trying to get the soccer field fixed up, but that's not why I'm here to speak. The second thing I went to talk to Mayor Swales about was that the parity between the different elementary schools here in Mount Pleasant, my kids go to James V. Edwards, they don't have windows that they look out. Sullivan's Island's kids are looking out at the Atlantic Ocean. That's not why I'm here to speak either. Why I am here to speak is that I asked Mayor Swales, the kids at our school had raised several thousand dollars to put towards a new playground, and I had asked Mayor Swales if the town could do anything else to kick in some funding. And he said that he thought, based on my PowerPoint presentation, and showed him all the different playgrounds, which he was already aware of in Mount Pleasant, that yes, James V. Edwards needed some help. He said he would work on both issues for me. I got home, within 45 minutes, I had a phone call from Mayor Swales, and he said, it's your lucky day. After you left our office, Johnson Development came in, and they are asking what they could do to be good corporate citizens. Now, I'm not here to talk about the development, whether you're in favor or not in favor. I'm here to tell you that Johnson Development, within 45 minutes, called me. They pledged to meet with me, we sat down, I went over my proposal with them, that I needed additional funding to upgrade the playground for my children and for all the children at James V. Edwards. They followed through, they came and toured the school. They've offered to partner with us over the long term and help us with any improvements that we need, not any, but, you know, specific areas in the school that they would help us and be willing. So within my two minutes, I just basically wanted to sum it up and say that as far as Johnson Development and hearing, I don't know a lot about all the things that are going with the planning in the town, but I can say that this particular developer, that they have stepped up and, you know, offered to help us here locally in the community and to partner with us. Thank you. Thank you.
That's out of order. Thank you. Anyway, we have a motion and a second for first reading on item number 10. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I still was looking forward to hearing the highlights of the further integration from the developer. I'd like to hear about it. Mr. Nichols, if I may, I think you can hear that in the next one, the next item is the impact assessment. Okay?
Right, we're here, we're really dealing with the zoning. And we'll allow you to speak under the impact assessment, if that's fine? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no, and motion carries.
First reading, order number 14084, orders to rezone two tracks of the plans opened from US Highway 17 to North James Nelson Road from MF, multifamily residential district and AB area-wide business district. EDM USC, plan development mixed-use suburban, urban district.
Now we have the impact assessment and conceptual plan for the same track.
Ms. Kelly?
You're, you're obviously with what the proposed project is, and so that is what was evaluated for the impact assessment. The conceptual plan is what is on the screen in front of you all. This was reviewed by the planning commission as well as the planning committee, who also have some additional recommendations with their recommendation for approval for those. And these would include to comply with the final engineering recommendations for making visual water and drainage, to ensure that the lighting minimally affects neighbors. This would be done through the design review process. To include pedestrian amenities and street furniture, this would be on-site, to ensure sidewalks both sides, this is also a design review aspect, that卡特, there would be a卡特stop included with amenities to go along with that, with bike racks, for example. And finally, to comply with all traffic improvements as specified in the transportation comment. And so those were the conditions that were part of the recommendation for approval by the planning commission and planning committee that are related back to the impact assessment and the conceptual plan.
We have a motion, second, first reading, and any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Did I not get an email from town staff on November the 10th, the Marine Corps birthday yesterday, stating that representatives of that have shared with staff adjustments to the plan intended to address the integration aspect of the plan?
Yes.
Okay, was that adjustments that have come up since one week ago for our plan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so there was not a meeting that I could go to anyplace, and I appreciate that. And I would like to hear a little bit about what I received when you have your plan.
Yes, sir. We intend to let you speak on that. Any other comments?
I don't have a spare. My name is Ken.
Uh, my name is Ken Seinfeld, Seinfeld White Side Associates, five oh one, on the Park Boulevard. I, I put together a quick little presentation for you guys, so that you can all stand where you're coming from. But before I get into the presentation, I wanna talk a little bit about by right on this piece of property. It is his own, just like Kristi Ann went through, as far as the numbers of units and the number of square feet of commercial. And the primary reason that the town's ordinance has put in a plan development, M-U-S-U, mixed-use suburban development, is to, to better the quality of life in the town of Mount Pleasant. And to do that, instead of having two separate projects, one with sixty-eight thousand square feet of retail and apartments of whatever it was, two hundred and sixty-three or whatever it was, and treat those completely separate, with buffers between them and all the requirements go along the ordinance. It allows a planner, the developer, to create a community that is integrated, functionally, walkable, and, and, and it creates a much better quality of life for the people that live on that piece of property. The other thing I wanna say is that this piece of property, as everybody's talking about, been around for a long time, has been looked at for a lot of different things, and has, and, and before the widening of Seventeenth. This property was designated as special interest considerations for development on this piece of property for the last twenty years.
Last of trees.
Yes, ma'am. What I was getting at, this property, as, as a road widening took place, was under consideration from a traffic standpoint for a long time. And it's not like coming in and asking for something that's just tremendously more intense than, than it could be. And you get these bonus densities for creating a much better quality of life. And that's what this, this whole process is all about. I mean, he could come in and develop this without going through rezoning. And it wouldn't be a project that we'd all be proud of. It wouldn't be integrated, it wouldn't have public space, it wouldn't have all the, uh, attributes that something like this can really have. So that, that being said, I just wanted, I wanted you guys to understand that that's the reason you look for these, for these planned developments, is to create a much higher quality of life in the town of Mount Pleasant. And, uh, and so, we work real hard and set goals before the project to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors. We've met with all of them. We, uh, with Sneak Farm, with the Wando Lakes, with, uh, the Retreat, uh, Wando East. We've been very sensitive in how we place these units and how this project's been worked. We've, uh, provided a mix of uses to create a desirable place. Starts with parks in the center. We've improved the downstream water to help problems that are, are existing today. We're gonna improve those. The developer's taken it on himself to make bigger ponds than he has to. So this is, I mean, this is a way to solve a lot of issues. Then the last one is to maintain an acceptable traffic condition and build out. And we're mitigating that. We've studied it and, and with Brad's reviews, and our traffic engineers' input, mitigation still maintains an acceptable level of service. Uh, this is a master plan we submitted, uh, for a conceptual plan. And, and that's what's up for review. And, um, it, it starts, like I said, it starts with, with parks in the center of this thing. It's about an acre. Civic buildings on the east side that, that are on the pond. It's got a hotel as a focal point, it's come up, James Nelson Road. Office building, storage facility, apartments, and then there's a commercial section of this that has grocery stores situated here, a couple of restaurants, and, and some retail space. Everything is within a five-minute walk from this as well. So that's the integrated part of it. Civic spaces, the integrated part. There's a lot of green space. We've got nine and a half acres of ponds on this, on this proposed project that, uh, that is not counted as our open space. We're, we have a half acre more than required of public open space, uh, for this development. And so I wanna kinda walk you through what the changes were. If you go to the next slide. It's kinda hard to see, ma'am, to go back and forth. But basically, what we started with was, there was a big building here of apartments, a three-story building. What we're gonna do is reduce the size of that, that building by about half the number of units. We're gonna take those units, and we're gonna move them into the commercial area, put them over the top of a retail building. So it's more inputting, activating the space with more people that live, live within this commercial area. And that's something that we, we met with staff last week, and, and I think everybody from staff standpoint just, feels much better about the plan than they did before. And that's very important for the developers, is that staff has to feel good about this. We had some differences as far as definitions, but I've come to the conclusion that it works good for the project. We've also, uh, even on the first plan, we've integrated some commercial space on the first floor of this building, which was, which helps integrate this, this medianage and come in, uh, mixed uses with some commercials all the way around. The other thing we've agreed, that this was an office building on the other piece of property, is to put residential over the top of it, so it introduces some residential other than these apartment buildings, it kinda activates this little space there. We changed the sizes of some of these buildings to accommodate, frankly, with some stuff around. There was a restaurant on this pond, we've taken it out completely and added that commercial space in, into this building as well. So, uh, overall, we've added, um, we've integrated, much integrated these, the residential into all aspects of the plan, so it, it works a lot better from that aspect.
Can you address the interconnectivity?
Sure. I mean, uh, I'll start with the B-hickers. We've got a road that comes in here, comes to around about, and the park is in the center. Main Street through these, through these buildings, it'll come, it'll come around and tie it in to an intersection here that comes back to Seventeenth. This proposed road is there in case, uh, that we, in case we can get access in the future to a divided median location that was proposed on the other front. From a financial standpoint, it's not, it's not reasonable to ask for that. There's walking trails that go all around the ponds throughout. There's a very strong length, uh, pedestrian length that goes all the way through the property. There's a bridge that'll be built over the pond, it terminates into this median and ties into the commercial area. So that, those are the areas that we're basing the assumptions.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Carrier?
Okay. We're about stubbing out the, uh, access points to the other areas without opening them up.
The B-hickers information was, at this point, this is Lower Lane, ends at Cul-de-sac here, and that road, there's a stubout proposed here, and there was a stubout proposed, actually got taken out, just in plan, uh, right up here.
Can you leave the stubouts there?
You can't.
I mean, that was gonna... Can you, can you leave them and close them? For now? Because I, I just have the feeling that down the road...
Sure.
One or three, one or three...
I mean, it's a, a very easy, very easy thing to do, is to accommodate that through there. And, and we've talked about the possibility, one of these days, from a safety, health and safety standpoint, is to have emergency access through there. So, those are certainly very realistic possibilities. This one at Lower Lane is the easiest one. This one that we're proposing down here would require some, um, permission to property under certain...
Second question is, you started off with four thousand mixed use, so now you're up to what now? Four thou- you had four thousand square foot just in the one building that was in...
Uh, as far as commercial, we had four thousand square feet in this building. I mean, in this building, sorry. And, uh, and then, actually, the square footage is about the same. What we've done is we moved the residential into, into some of the, into some of the areas that are not residential. So that's, that's how we, uh, the square footage has had to change as far as, uh, the commercial.
What is your plans for the bottom commercial building, where you now got residents up on top?
Uh, the half of Marshall on the bottom floor, and then two stories...
So no specific commercial? No specific type of...
No, it's mainly big retail space.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good start.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. We do have a motion and a second, don't we? It's been quite a while. We have a motion and a second for the impact assessment and conceptual plan approval with no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
And it carries.
And for clarification, that included those conditions, because there are not multiple readings on impact assessment.
Yes, that Mr. Nichols explained.
Madam Mayor, we have an understanding before our next reading. Staff, if you don't comply, and us to be options, I'll take them.
And we would have been our final reading, at the eight amendments to final reading.
But to just make sure that we have four and a half of these.
Yes. Kristi Ann, I, I, I understand that items number twelve, thirteen, they've asked for a car?
They have. They, um, have asked for, they have previously been granted a parole. They are requesting a parole again, um, until, no later than, than January. The applicant doesn't understand that when January arrives, they will need to make the decision, because you, as the council, can no longer...
Twelve and thirteen.
I have a motion and a second to defer till January, item number twelve and thirteen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? And the item carries. Uh, let's move on to old business, uh, item number one.
This is, uh, final reading of a five-year update to the town of Mount Pleasant comprehensive plans with, this was in front of you at your last meeting for first reading. There were, uh, four items that we wanted the Planning Committee to review and discuss further, and, uh, any of those, if they were any changes that would come through that particular process, would have to be, um, amended to your current or final reading. So go through those specifically. Um, let's keep going, please. Okay. The, the first item that the Planning Committee reviewed was whether or not additional text should be added for the Teakrass, Basket Everleigh District and Charleston, in coordination with Charleston County. In consideration of the text that's already in the plan, uh, the Planning Committee did not recommend any additions or changes for, uh, any of this text. Next item, please. Um, the Planning Committee did recommend a recommendation for modification to the future land use map for twelve ninety-seven Chuck Dolly Boulevard. So actually, what you're seeing, uh, on this plan, this is, or, excuse me, on the screen, is this was the, um, or is currently, the future land use recommendation. You see the first half of the property is an urban corridor. The back half is recreation and open space. And then after some discussion, that Planning Committee, the end result was that the urban corridor would be only up here. That, that, um, line, the dividing line, would be, uh, basically the same as the, the back property line for the S-D-E-N-G property, which is next door. And then the back half of the property would be medium-density residential, so a change from the, obviously, the recreation and open space, which would not allow any kind of, of development, or would be extremely limited development. So this is, this is a recommendation for a change to the map. And so, uh, if council does want to, um, take into consideration, Planning Commission recommendation, excuse me, Planning Committee recommendation here, is would you make the amendment prior to file reading to accept this change? Uh, the next was multi-family, uh, development. There was some discussion, um, we've obviously had some discussion even this evening. And, uh, the ultimately, the committee did not recommend any check, text changes to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan right now, but did agree that there would be further discussion, uh, at Mr. Marshall's with your committee, uh, and to, I'm sorry, I'm the Planning Commission, we should say, Plan Committee. Um, there will be a further discussion regarding multi-family at the, some of the Planning Committee. And then finally, Mr. Santos, at our last, um, at first reading, Mr. Santos suggested some changes to one of the bullet points in the comprehensive plan. And the, I know Planning Committee members had some questions for, for Mr. Santos, um, related to his proposed changes. And so, um, as a result of that, didn't make any modifications or recommendations for any changes at this point in time. I don't want to see clarification from him. And so, uh, out of the four, at this point, there's, there's one that has been recommended for change by the Planning Committee.
That is number...
Number two, so it's Chuck Dolly property.
Madam Mayor, is it a point where should we take these, let's take them one at a time? We, we would make a motion to approve, and then we'd...
Right. The best thing to do is if someone were to make a motion, um, for final reading, and that it not going to discuss, discuss each one, and then any amendments that Mr.... Final reading.
Sir?
I have a motion and a second for final reading.
Madam Mayor, I, I would like to make, um, make a motion for amendment to, as, as, um, Kristi Ann had, that's up on the board. I made a motion, uh, to amend the provisions, ordinance number fourteen, code six eight, propose five-year update to the town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan two thousand nine, two thousand nineteen, to include the changes to the text as shown on the slide presented by Ms. Farrell. I'm also, I'm also beginning to copy up the proposed changes to our corporate council.
Yeah, no, we're going, there it is. No, it went wrong way. Thank you. And a question from Mr. Glasson.
I'm going to say for council, Madam Mayor, yeah.
I'm going to need a second for the amendment. Okay, go.
Now we have a motion and a second for the... Do we have a motion inside of a motion?
Yes.
So should we vote on the comprehensive plan and then go back and add each or deny each item that we got to?
We have to vote on each amendment, and then give an amendment, if approved, then you go back and then put the entire ordinance with the amendment set up.
So the motion, the motion on the table now is the amendment for this issue, which is the text change proposed by Councilman Santos. And that's what we're discussing. Mr. Glasson?
Just another point of clarification. We certainly put the card before the board, so if we voted on, on each one of these individually, whether they would be added or not, and the ones that are, then we can vote on the comprehensive plan. So we're gonna... Does that make sense? We're gonna vote on something, we don't know what's in it. We're voting on each one individually, so if they're added or not.
Amendment is passed, as if it's not, the amendment isn't approved, the amendment is simply made a part of the ordinance that we are then voting on, okay? So we have to approve it in its entirety after the amendment. Amendment just includes it in the ordinance.
Okay.
So for point of order, we still need to vote on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, that's right. Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment that Mr. Santos has heard with? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
No.
I need to count. Roll call would be the easiest. Uh, Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garth?
Aye.
Mr. Garth votes yes. Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Glasson votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Smith votes no. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
No.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes no. Mayor Page? Yes. Mayor Page votes yes. Yes, here in five and four. Thank you. We have a motion for the whole comprehensive plan, final reading, and a second.
Does, does this include the twelve ninety-seven Chuck Dolly?
That's gonna say, or do we need to vote on that first? Okay, yes. We need to vote on the Chuck Dolly, uh, line draw.
Go.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to change the rule conservation, um, on that one lot with urban corridor in front.
Yes, the big medium density on the back half of the lot is rather than recreation and space.
Okay.
Straighten the line.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the item carries. Now we need to vote on the whole comprehensive plan. And we have a motion and a second. We also have speaker. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Final reading, ordinance number one four zero six eight, orders providing for five-year update to town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan two thousand nine, two thousand nineteen.
Item number two is another final reading. This is the ordinance with pipe plantation.
You were referring to items two and three.
I have a motion and a second for final reading, items number two and three. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes carry.
Final reading, ordinance number 14069, ordinance providing annexation approximately three to one five eight, a parcel of land, ordered block 19, pepper plantation located along Rosebud Trail, identified by team message number 6150000150. Final reading, number 14070, in order to zone P D C D, plan development, conservation, design district, approximately 3.5 acre parcel of land, ordered block 19, pepper plantation located on old Rosebud Trail, identified by team message number 6150000150.
Thank you, Mr. Jamar. Item number four, final reading on an ordinance pertaining to the code of ordinance with maximum building heights.
Final reading, number four.
I have a motion and a second for final reading, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unenned.
Final reading, number 14072, in order to amend section 156.318p5a of chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant code of ordinances pertaining to maximum building height and build two lines on certain properties located in the U C O D urban corridor overlay district.
Thank you, final reading, number five, it's an ordinance to amend.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for final reading, item number five, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Final reading, number 14071, in order to amend section 156.318p5b of chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant code of ordinances pertaining to maximum building height in the U C O D urban corridor overlay district.
Thank you. Item number six and seven, I believe, are spoken about in my report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for items number six and seven, any discussion? All in favor?
Well, it's going, it's being demolished now, and it looks great.
Joe Lately Estates is officially off the map.
I'm not crying, I've been at every one of those houses, but I see it all along.
Madam Mayor, can we add in number eight to that?
The motion's already been made, so we have a motion and a second for six and seven, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unenned.
Final reading, number 14038, in order to provide here a space of two posses of land located at the northwest corner of Myrick Road and Riker Range Road. Final reading, number 14073, in order to amend the town of Mount Pleasant comprehensive plan 2009-2019, future land use, pertaining to two posses of land comprised of approximately 1.48 acres, located at 1327-1319, Myrick Road, from medium density neighborhood to high density neighborhood.
Item number eight is on the same track, it's an ordinance to present.
Final reading, second.
I have a motion and a second for item number eight, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Final reading, number 14039, in order to zone our T H, townhouse for sale, residential district, two posses of land located at the northwest corner of Myrick Road and Riker Range.
We are on to committee reports, I would ask that A through J, the prospective chair of those committees, please submit your report to the clerk for the record, and we will move right to item number K, Public Services.
Yeah, ma'am.
Thank you, Public Services Committee.
Madam Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to report that Public Services met last week for a very informative meeting. We have an action item, number one, staff presented an application from the good folks at Simmons Point Homeowners Association for a tree bank grant in the amount of $1,000 to plant four southern magnolia trees along Bend Southern Boulevard. I move to recommend council's approval for the Simmons Point Homeowners Association tree bank grant application as requested.
I have a motion and a second for Simmons Point to be, plant some beautiful magnolias, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes carry.
Second item was staff reported that our great, relatively new committee, the Culture, Arts and Pride Commission recommends that the East Cooper Hospital, East Cooper Regional Medical Center, Madam Mayor, receive the civic pride award based on the sustained outstanding appearance of their campus. I move to recommend council's approval for the East Cooper Regional Medical Center or Hospital to receive the civic pride award.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to recognize East Cooper Medical Center, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes carry.
I don't know what she is, Madam Mayor, another very neat part of our meeting was that we get to recognize folks for years of service, and I'm looking directly at that person right now, Ms. Martine Wolf Miller, for 15 years of service. Let me just tell you this, I've only gotten to know her over the last several years, she makes my day and anybody's day brighter and better just being around her. She's tireless, she's thorough, she's type A, she's all the things I love, and thank you from all of us here at Martin's. And we've got a lot of neat stuff coming your way soon to be, also, and this was really interesting, it was for information only at this point, Madam Mayor, and we appreciate the folks who've sent us emails, but come this January, we're going to discuss artificial turf versus natural gas, we're going to talk about installation, grass. Artificial gas.
Hey, check, see if y'all listen.
I'm sorry, I need to get some coffee. All right, let me try that again, artificial turf versus natural grass, and that's going to be a robust conversation that will take up at our January retreat, it's already been robust, so we received a lot of information on that from Mr. Keel who made a roadie to Rock Hill and Myrtle Beach to help see what was going on up there, I did read the City of Charleston, so you can certainly, I just read the paper as well. Last item of business, and I know this is the one that the, this is why these folks are still here, was the pilot program that has been given a blessing for the Conan Crab Crawl, and he caught the, it was a proposal from the Cultural Arts and Pride Commission, basically, this is, these guys have been working on this a long time, we're going to embrace the local artists, and we're going to celebrate public art. During this first pilot phase, hang on, two to three crab sculptures are going to be installed along Conan Boulevard to gauge maintainability and, yes, visual appeal, and we're going to get feedback on these things, and we're going to hear from the community, and then we're going to revisit that down the road and see if that, how that is working. And so, Mayor Page, thank you for putting up, and thank you for the, I appreciate the report.
Thank you, I look forward to the crabs, and I do think we need to turn the big crabs, we need to turn the big crabs into cornhole boards, that's the, that's the mayor's recommendation. L M N and O, please, committees, please support your reports, I'll move right on to the administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor announcing five bigs.
Thank you, we moved council, well, new business to, I think earlier in the agenda, there is no old business to have before this council, we do have a need to go into executive session. Our motion and acceptance, I didn't know what to ask. To, I know, yes, sir. I will say why when I can speak, I was having a problem getting the words out of my mouth. Yes, sir, we need legal and contractual update on pending legal matters. And I have a motion and second and personnel, I'm sorry, I have never been, and personnel with the accommodations tax advisory committee applications and historical commission applications. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And we are moving into executive session.
No, we leave and then we come back.